We're gonna get started, we have such a big agenda tonight, so we're gonna get started. Welcome to the March 4th meeting. I'd like to have us all stand to do the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on our nation under God, indivisible, liberating, just as all.
We have two emergency exits, one on either side of the room. I understand that we have some very adorable students from Wilson here tonight, so Dr. Johnson?
Thank you very much. We are really privileged tonight to be able to celebrate both at the elementary level and at the high school level, some of the incredible accomplishments and work that goes on in our buildings. We'd like to start with the Wilson students and their student government. We have our principal, who's sitting very demurely over there in the corner, thinking he's gonna defend only his budget, but he's gonna do some introductions, so Mr. Duffy, if you don't mind, please, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, good evening, and tonight we're gonna be highlighting our student government. Student government at Wilson School gives kids a chance to show leadership skills, a chance to do some fundraising, and a chance to make some positive change at the school and at the community. I'm very proud of all the students who run for student government and the students here that came to speak tonight, and I'd like to turn it over to our student government advisors, who have been running the program for over 20 years, Ms. Pat Meehan and Ms. Kara Spinelli.
Can we stand over here, is that alright? Stand right here? Okay, I have to put my reading glasses on. So, good evening, my name is Kara Spinelli, I'm a 4th grade student, eh, a 4th grade student. Let's start over, let's start over. I like the microphone a lot, so, and you'll see that by the end, but anyway, my name is Kara Spinelli, and I'm a 4th grade teacher at Wilson School and a student government co-advisor. Throughout the school year, the student government representatives gather ideas from their classmates and the staff for ways to enhance the overall experience at Wilson, and for ways to support our community and beyond. We do spirit days, canned food drives, walk-a-thons, and we work the student vote at the district budget vote. That's just a few of the things that we do, and most notable, these are some of the things we've done over the last 20 years together. This winter, we held the spirit day, the students wore football jerseys around the time of the Super Bowl, and it was in conjunction with our Wilson School Tackles Hunger Canned Food Drive. We hold, we hold an annual canned food drive in June, the local outreach centers are very thankful for the donations at this time of the year because at that time supplies are low. The students' level walk-a-thon, they are getting exercise and time outside, and they are raising funds. The last few years, we have raised funds for Williams Syndrome for a former Wilson student. We've worked for the Tommy Brill Fund, an organization that's run by a Wilson family, and the kids were most super excited to get out and move it forward for Mr. B.'s Inclusive Playground that is going to be built at the Rockwell Center Rec Center. For over six years, it's not very long, it's just very big, because I can't say, so, for six years, we have sponsored a student in Masai Africa through the Help Uganda Organization. Her name is Elizabeth, we correspond with her, and we're very happy to say she's doing well in her studies. The Wilson Greenhouse was partly funded by student government and the Rockwell Center Ed Foundation. The Greenhouse has been a part of Wilson and our thriving garden club for over 10 years, right, Mrs. Vaki? 10 years of garden club? Excellent. The movie screen at Wilson was donated by the Wilson student government, and we are looking forward to Mr. Duffy's upcoming movie night. This is an old one. We even raised funds to help save the Nunleys Carousel, which is now housed near the Long Island Children's Museum. You can take a ride on our horse named Wilson Warrior. Our two biggest events are the Wilson Talent Show and the Student Government Carnival. The Wilson Talent Show has been held each year for over 30 years. This is the 21st year in a row for Mrs. Meehan and myself. It is a wonderful experience for our students as young as 5 to 11 to showcase their unique abilities. We have solo performers and large group acts, there's singing, dancing, magic tricks, piano, joke telling, and much more. This year, we actually have 240 student performers in the talent shows. So we run four mini-shows with about 15 acts in each, and our 5th grade student government representatives who are here tonight, they work the stage, the curtains, the props, and they are the announcers. And the last thing really that we, one of our big events is, in June, we host a carnival for the students, for the entire school. The kids play games like kickball bowling, penny toss, they have potato sack races, and this is our thanks to the students for buying ice cream and supporting student government throughout the year. So now we're gonna pass it over to Pat.
Hi, I'm a kindergarten teacher at Wilson School. I'm just gonna give you a little rundown about our election process. So in the beginning of the year in the fall, we have class representatives elected from each classroom, two students come from 1st grade classrooms through 5th grade classrooms, and they bring to the meetings their suggestions from the class, the students in their class. After that, we hold primary elections, where 2nd graders can run to be the class, the school treasurer, the 3rd graders can run to be the secretary for the school, the 4th graders can run to be the vice president, and the 5th graders can run to be presidents. And once the grade level choose, choose the top three people from their grade level, after speeches are given and they vote, then we have the final elections at the school level for the whole school to come and view the speeches for the top three candidates in each position, the parents are invited. Mayor Murray and the deputy mayor have come this year to witness those and speeches, so it's really a great experience for them to see how a little mini-government can be run. We don't have any kind of things that are going on now on TV with president's elections and, and things like that, but we do our own little bit for that. And now we're gonna introduce the students.
Yes. Show a video first. So we have, our president was unable to make it because she's at a GBL championship game, so, and two other students couldn't make it, so we just, they gave a little speech right there.
Do we need to turn off the lights?
Uh, maybe.
Is this sound ready? Okay.
Good evening, my name is Annalise Pachilani, and I am student government president. I was elected by Wilson students in grades 1 through 5 to help Wilson School be the best it can be. My responsibilities include leading each student government meeting, I stand in front of groups and give suggestions for ways to improve the school. Also, I'll give a speech at the 5th grade moving up ceremony, discussing the great lessons learned at Wilson and the good times ahead. Some of the great things that student government organize are: Spirit Day, two canned food drives a year, donations and charity, weekly ice cream sales, new games for indoor recess, and end of the year carnival to thank the students for their support throughout the year. I like being a part of student government because I like being a leader, and I want to do all I can to make Wilson a better place before I leave.
Good evening, my name is Reece Long, I am a 5th grade student government representative. I want to be in student government because I want to make a school even better than it already is. I want to be able to bring new ideas to Wilson while working with other students and teachers. I like being a part of student government because I like working with other students and teachers. I also like being a part of working on different projects and charities that benefit our school and our community. One charity we donate to is Rough House Rescue, we need money to help out those in need.
Good evening, my name is Nathan Tucker, I am the student government secretary. Each morning, I record notes in the student government notebook. I write down suggestions for Spirit Day and ideas for ways to improve Wilson School. I like being a part of student government because I can help Wilson School to be a better place for the students, for the present and future students. I can do this by talking with people to make decisions for Wilson School and helping others.
So at this time, I'd like to call up the members of student government who are here today, who are gonna tell you a little bit about some of the different functions that they have in the school. So come on up, kids.
Jen, Jen, are you related?
Good evening, my name is Jack Henry Bradley, I am student government vice president. I was elected after giving a speech in front of Wilson students, kids in grades 1 through 5 can vote, kindergarten just watch the process. I felt excited when I was speaking in front of a large group. My responsibilities include helping the president and Annalise. I like being a part of student government because I like working as part of the team and sharing my ideals with the people in student government. It makes me happy when I help others and my community in Wilson School. One of my favorite things we did this year was write valentines for the veterans. Every student in the school decorated a heart and gave thanks to people in our community. Being part of student government at Wilson School makes me happy.
Good evening, my name is Karen Spatz, I'm the student government treasurer. My responsibilities include counting money from our ice cream sales. The money is, the money is used to make donations to charities during the holidays. This year, we donated a total of $300, $1100 each to Camp Anchor, Rough House Rescue, and the American Red Cross. Student government takes pride in helping others. I like being a part of student government because I love working with others to help make Wilson the best school. The ice cream sales are really fun, too.
Good evening, my name is Shay Kavanaugh, I'm a 5th grade student government representative. I wanted to be in student government because I wanted to take part in making great decisions for Wilson School. I like being a part of student government because I like to raise money to help the school and to give to charities. I also like selling ice cream to the, to the younger kids on Thursdays, with the money from the ice cream sales we donated to Camp Anchor.
Good evening, my name is David Cassup, I am 5th grade student government representative. I wanted to be in student government because I like helping make decisions for the school to make it a better place. I like being a part of student government because it is a great experience. It teaches me how to speak in front of an audience and how to be trustworthy. I was a, I was lucky enough to serve as Wilson secretary in 3rd grade and vice president in 4th. I look forward to being in student government in middle school. You never know, the United States might need me in 2020's election.
Good evening, my name is Henry Preston, I am a 5th grade student government representative. I wanted to be in student government because I really like to help make the school a better place. I like being a part of student government because I help make a lot of decisions on where to donate money and when to do spirit days, and what to do with the money from ice cream sales. We brought indoor recess games, for example, Uno, Monopoly, Connect Four, and Guess Who.
Good evening, my name is Kay Coslick, I'm a 5th grade student government representative at Wilson Elementary. I've always wanted to be in student government to help make the school better for the students. This is my first year at student government, and because I'm in 5th grade, this is my last year to make a difference. I wanted to be in student government to help organize and plan events like the school carnival and many of our fundraisers. I like being a part of student government to make the school a better place. I love all the great things they do, like selling ice cream every Thursday. We also have spirit days and fun carnivals. Every year on Flag Day, the whole school dresses up in red, white, and blue, and we say the pledge in, on the front lawn. I'm proud to be one of the amazing representatives of Wilson School.
Good evening, my name is Frankie McKenna, I'm a 5th grade student government representative. I wanted to be in student government because I wanted to help and lead the school by going to all of the meetings, selling ice cream, and much more. I like being a part of student government because it is fun and shows leadership. I really enjoy going to the meetings and sharing ideas to make the school a better place. My favorite part of student government is selling ice cream on Thursdays. Every class has a suggestion box, the students share their ideas, and student government tries to make it happen. Even though I have to wake up early for the meetings, it's definitely worth it.
Well, now everyone knows where to go to get their ice cream on Thursdays at Wilson School.
Did you bring samples?
Free samples if you come by. Pat, Miss Meehan won't allow it. And I, and I think we could tell by how wonderfully you spoke today, how all that practice in public speaking really is paying off, you're doing a wonderful job, not only tonight, but in student government, and we thank you for all your great leadership qualities and what you're doing for the school. Great job, guys, and Miss Meehan and Mr. Duffy.
Oh, we're all going?
We have some future board of ed members maybe in this room. We're gonna move on to our larger children now, and we're gonna recognize our student athletes. Dr. Johnson?
All right, thank you very much. Again, this is a wonderful opportunity that we take at the end of each of our sporting seasons. I find it hard to believe that we are at the end of our winter season already, and that, I'd like to turn this over to Carol Rossetto, the director of athletics, who will do the introductions of the coaches and our fantastic athletes, so go.
My pleasure. I also belong to Mrs. Spinelli's School of Type Font, and I'm coming to Wilson on Thursday because I love ice cream. So it's my pleasure every year to introduce the athletes who really excel during the year, before the season, after the season, during the season. So tonight, I honor them for their outstanding achievements for the 2019-20 winter season. Before I begin speaking about the individual accomplishments, I'm always proud to announce that during the winter, boys' and girls' basketball, boys' and girls' winter track, boys' swimming and diving, girls' gymnastics, and boys' wrestling teams were all recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as Winter 2020 Scholar-Athlete Teams. So congratulations to all of the teams. I would first like to take a moment to call up Coach Cheryl Scallis, and I also see some of her athletes, if you wanna join her to support, come on ladies. They didn't know they were coming up. Sorry, I put you on the slide. It is my pleasure to announce that Coach Scallis will be inducted into Nassau County High School Athletic Hall of Fame. Cheryl has been a volleyball coach and a PE teacher for the district for over 30 years. She was a gymnastics coach for 18, and recently took on the position of high school assistant track coach for the past three years, right, this year's gonna be four. Cheryl takes her role as coach very seriously, and handles herself with pride, confidence, integrity, and character. And even more importantly, year after year, Cheryl instills these traits in her athletes, which has resulted in numerous team sportsmanship awards and multiple conference, county, Long Island, and state championships. Cheryl herself has been voted the coach of the year 15 times, most recently as the New York State and Long Island Coach of the Year for her performance this fall. Cheryl will be officially inducted into the Hall of Fame in September.
Wait, pictures.
Photo.
Wait, photo. Yeah.
Through a tremendous amount of hard work and dedication, on and off-season, each of the following individuals have earned all-county honors or above. Unfortunately, due to a lot of last-minute activities and events, some of our athletes and coaches could not be here tonight, but I will tell you about them, and they will be honored at their team and county dinners as well. Our all-county gymnasts cannot be here tonight because they're actually at the Nassau County Gymnastics Dinner being honored, but I would like to recognize Erin Agolia and Peyton Waller, who both, both earned all-county honors on the floor event this season. In addition, Ryan Davidoff and Nicholas Rhodes from the boys' swimming and diving team also can't be here tonight, they're actually at a state practice for the state championships that are Friday and Saturday. There, it's at the Nassau County Aquatic Center, to take advantage, 10:30 on both days. Ryan earned all-county honors in the 50 freestyle and 100 butterfly, and qualified for the state championships in five individual events. Nick earned all-county honors in the 100 butterfly, and will also be competing in that event in the state championships this week. So congratulations to. From the girls' basketball team, Arianna McLean was a two-year varsity player and a two-year award winner, who has acknowledged this season with all-county, as an all-county athlete. And Katie McManon was a four-year varsity player and a three-year award winner, and a two-year all-county athlete, who received unanimous selection from the coaches in Nassau County as a county athlete. So congratulations to the girls' basketball team. From the winter track team, Avery Brule earned all-conference and all-county honors in the 1,000 and 1,500 meter races, finishing second in both events in the conference and county championships. Carly Wolfle, who is presently at West Point tonight for orientation, once again won the county championship in the grueling 3,000-meter race, and earned the privilege of representing Nassau County in the state championships this Saturday at the Ocean Breeze Athletic Complex. So congratulations. Now I would invite Coach Chris Webster and Izzy Tomkill, James Abarella, Paul Mata, Roberto Milan, Charles Ohanian, and Tim Warner from the girls' and boys' winter track team, come on up. So we're gonna go with ladies first. When was the last time you decided to pick up a 10-foot pole to jump over a barrier without hurting yourself? Well, senior Izzy Tomkill has dedicated a great deal of time perfecting this skill, has countless, has spent countless hours on her own going to clinics in order to improve, and as a result of her efforts, holds the school pole vaulting record, and finished third in the county championships, earning all-county honors. Tim Warner, wave, so they know who you are, has spent the last few years focusing his energy and discipline on the jumping events, and as a result, earned the title of best long jumper and triple jumper for the Cyclones. This year, Tim saw his dedication pay off, as he placed third in the Nassau County Championships in long jump, earning him all-county honors. Congratulations, Tim. The next four boys, wave when I say your name, James Abarella, Paul Mata, Charles Ohanian, and Roberto Milan, all earned all-county honors as part of Southside's 4x400-meter relay. This season, these boys came together to combine their individual talents and merge into county contenders. Each boy worked on his own skill and discipline, and displayed the commitment and concentration to run a successful relay. Coach Webster stated that it was inspiring and encouraging to see these four athletes come together and demonstrate the teamwork that led to a second-place finish in the county championship, and earned each of them all-county honors. It is now my pleasure to invite Coach Robinson and wrestler Thomas Wagner to join me. The Cyclones would like to congratulate sophomore Thomas Wagner on earning all-county honors in the 99-pound weight class this season. Thomas led the team with a 25 and 8 record, and had a hat-trick, winning three consecutive tournaments during the season. Thomas also finished second in the Massapequa Tournament, as well as this year's county qualifiers. During the county championship, Thomas battled his way through the semifinals and finished 4th place overall, earning all-county honors. And last, but certainly not least, I would like to call to the podium Coach Jerry D'Angelo and Aiman McGowan and Jack Murphy from the boys' basketball team. Jake, Jake, sorry. I have Jake. Sorry about that, Jake. The boys' basketball team finished as conference champions and are on their way to the Nassau County Championship this Saturday, 5:00 PM, SUNY Farmingdale. We're going against the Elmont Dragons. So come support if you're not going to red and blue. To start, I am proud to announce that Coach Jerry D'Angelo was named Conference Coach of the Year. Captain Aiman McGowan has been on the varsity team for the past three years as a starter, averaging 16 points per game with 11 rebounds as a senior. Coach D'Angelo stated that Aiman is a two-time all-county athlete, who is one of the most versatile players in Nassau County. Congratulations, Aiman. Jake, better known as Jack, Murphy, has been on the team for the past two years, averaging 19 points per game with four rebounds and two steals as a senior. Coach D'Angelo stated that Jake is viewed as one of the most dynamic guards in the conference this season, and as a result, earned all-county honors. So congratulations, Jake. And congratulations, and good luck on Saturday, go get them.
I don't know. She can talk from anywhere.
We'll see you in the spring. Congratulations to all of our student-athletes and our thank you to our coaches.
Emma, now we like to buy. Emma, all alone. Yeah, look at that. There's a song, it's mean, but I could sing it. I'm from the middle school, but I won't. I would never. I know I'm not. I'm not. I bet you do. I bet you know something like...
Okay, Dr. Johnson, I understand we have a gift?
There is, thank you very much. We are blessed again to have with us the, it looks like a good number of the board members, if not the entire board, from the Ryan O'Shea Foundation. We are, again, truly indebted for the contribution that they are going to make to our program here at Southside High School. And it's really a wonderful program called Sources of Strength. And what I'd like to do is just give the public a little bit of an understanding of what it is. And I've asked John Murphy just if he would say a few words before, in fact, we accept the check. So if you don't mind, John?
Thanks, Dr. Johnson, and thanks to the Ryan O'Shea Foundation for the meetings and the collaboration. So the district's been through a lot over the last 24 months, 36 months, involving student loss, suicide, tragedy, and coping skills. And we've worked very hard to advocate and to put our best foot forward and to try to be a solution-based response. Students have put forward ideas. I've worked very closely with Dr. Leahy and outside agencies from the Long Island Crisis Center to the Mental Health Task Force to do a series of events and efforts that have had an effect. And we've been listening a lot to students, to what they want, to what they need, as well as to the outside agencies, because sometimes the things that we want and desperately feel like we need may not be helpful. So we've been honestly looking outside for a collaborative effort that would help us coordinate those initiatives and tasks, from bringing therapy dogs in, to forming a mental health task force, to having mindfulness moments, meditation, to teaching us how to respond. And what we found over time is that some of these best-laid plans can actually look great from the outside, but can actually be traumatizing to students because we're dealing with the topic of suicide and student loss that can be actually devastating if not done correctly. So we've been looking for an answer and we found it ultimately, and through Dr. Leahy and really the Long Island Crisis Center helping us and collaborating with the Ryan O'Shea Foundation to a national organization called Source of Strength. It's actually an international organization, but they're the most research-based, vetted, suicide-preventative organization in the world. And there are a couple of things that attracted us. One is they're, instead of focusing on risk factors and causes of suicide, their focus is preventative factors and sources of strength. In other words, it's based on positive psychology. The solution long-term to healing, both as an individual and as a community, is finding those positive factors that we know attribute to a healthy lifestyle, finding them, reinforcing them in a positive way, and being a solution-based answer rather than focusing on the tragedies that we've all experienced. It's also, they call it an upstream model, that imagine that you're living on a stream and there's a waterfall at the end of it and there's a lot of loss occurring at the waterfall. Well, you could stand at the waterfall's edge and try to save people, or you could move downstream a half a mile and find out why they're getting there in the first place. And they focus on the upstream as well as triage and expediency for those most at risk. So the benefits are multiple. They've corrected so many of the mistakes that we didn't even know we were making. First of all, it's peer-based and that the students are trained to become trainers, not as counselors, psychologists, and therapists, but as friends and active ears on the ground to help themselves. They also become their own source of strength. It is also the only resource that we found that it's talking about the entire community. The selection of students, the selection of staff, from teachers, teacher's aides, paraprofessionals, custodians, secretaries, are all involved in a three-year process to bring the school into a more positive, community-based, positive reactive force. I'm excited, I'm intimidated, I'm scared by the level of work, but we knew that when we were going to find something, it was going to be, wow, this is going to be hard. So that was the reassurance that we received. I'm excited, I'm thankful to the O'Shea Foundation for listening and supporting us. And you'll be seeing these type of things around. This is their symbol. It's a symbol of the sources of strength that they try to communicate from healthy activities, mentors, positive friends, family support, mental health, access to medical resources, spirituality, and generosity. And through a series of positive activity, constructive learning opportunities, we're not just going to transform kids, we're going to transform the community and the school and heal. So thank you.
Kathy, you want?
All right. Good evening. Tonight it is my honor and privilege to speak on behalf of the Board of the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation. The foundation was created in 2019 with the purpose of giving children the tools to navigate their future. As a 501(c)(3) foundation, our mission is to increase awareness about mental health and to provide education for the prevention of suicide. The foundation is extremely grateful for our community's support and tonight we are very excited to speak about our sponsorship of a new program, which Mr. Murphy just spoke about, Sources of Strength. Sources of Strength will be implemented for all students here at Southside High School. Our Board investigated multiple programs and along with the school district administration, decided that Sources of Strength was the best fit for our district's programming and philosophy, the foundation's philosophy, and for the needs of our children. The Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation is here tonight to present a check to the school district in the amount of $18,500 for this program and we proudly present this check to Dr. Johnson and Mr. Murphy.
Before you leave, thank you so much to everybody on the Board of the Foundation. Thank you so much. District response to coronavirus, Dr. Johnson?
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to accept the gift, I did forget that. I got so excited.
Oh, that's true, go ahead.
Yes, so do I have a motion to accept the gift?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have officially accepted the large check. Thank you very much, John and family, thank you so much.
Not to make light of the situation, but you know that's a real check.
You said that, we need a large bank.
Picture that in your piggy bank.
Giant ATM.
The auditors will have a field day with that, right? So coronavirus. You know, it's very difficult not to turn on the TV or read any of the newspapers or turn on the radio without hearing some story about coronavirus. So there is lots and lots going on in the world of schools and coronavirus. I'd like to just talk for a few minutes about some of what's happening in the world of schools. Number one, I think you need to understand, or we all need to understand, that we are really living and working with two sets of priorities. I know Dr. Leahy and I, along with Tara Algerio-Vento here at the Southside High School, have been meeting regularly with either county health department officials, with state education department officials, with the New York State Department of Health. Priority is twofold. One, make sure that our children, when they are here in our schools, are safe. And number two, the second focus is really maintaining the continuity of instruction for all of our children. But when you begin to take a look at those two things and begin to take a look at the complexities of the problems associated with the onset of this problem here in the nation, in our state, and here within Long Island, we are still very hopeful that the number of cases will remain on Long Island at zero. However, we have to plan and begin to take a look at the future and the near term and the long term and ask ourselves, what are some of the things that we need to do in order to make sure that our children are safe in this continuity of instruction? Number one, I can't emphasize strongly enough how important it is that we and families here in Rockville Center really focus on the things that are associated with good hygiene. We need to teach our children to make sure that in all of our buildings, both staff and children regularly wash their hands. Every single meeting that I go to, no matter who it is that I am meeting with, there is always an emphasis upon doing exactly this, frequently and thoroughly, wash your hands. There is no better way to, in fact, retard the development of this virus. It is a respiratory infection and all of the good things that we do in order to maintain personal health should in fact be done for the stopping of this virus from spreading within our community. Number two, I know people are concerned about what we are doing within our schools to make sure that the surfaces are sanitized regularly. I can just assure you that the chemicals that we are using right now has been determined to kill the virus and that we regularly, on a daily basis, make sure that all of the surfaces with whom, with which we are in constant contact are sanitized, whether they be the pushes on the doors, the door handles, desktops, seats, anything that would normally come in contact with the hands of anybody within our schools. So that being said, there is another topic that continues to arise in various venues in which we have had discussions and this has to do with field trips outside of the country. It's been the recommendation, although it has not appeared yet in print, of both the health department and our state education department, that we as school districts look very, very carefully at the field trips and in fact, consider seriously canceling all unless there are some that are really done out of necessity. So we will, and in the opportunity for discussion, we may want to bring it up, but it would be my recommendation at this point. We only have one trip that is planned right now. What we're saying is that we should probably cancel that trip and particularly do it in a timely manner so that all the children who in fact might be traveling outside of this country will have an opportunity to have, they and their family have the money that they have invested in that trip returned to them in its entirety. The third thing really has to do with the instruction. It's very difficult not to get involved in a discussion whenever we are connected to people interested in the schools. Well, what happens if you close? What do you do? In the event that you do have to close schools, what are you going to do? First of all, I will tell you that nobody's anxious to close schools. But in the event that we do, I can assure you that we have tried to anticipate an extended closure of schools. For those of you who have studied this or looked into this, you know that in the countries where schools have been closed, they've been closed for at least a month. I can tell you, given the period of time, the incubation period, at the very least, once schools are closed, for whatever the reason, they will probably have to be closed for a minimum of 14 days and probably closer to 30 days. So it's not something that we look forward to, but it's something that we probably are going to have to respond to. And in the event that that happens, what we're doing right now is we're putting together plans that will enable us to use the electronic media that we have available to all of our students here in Rockville Center as a means for enabling our students to continue to participate in instruction at home. So very early on in the stages of our exploration of this opportunity, we are working with both on two fronts. One is the technical side to make sure that it's possible and the other is exploring a variety of different software packages that couldn't be used. We would normally use them to probably supplement, but can they supplant some of the work that we do within our schools, at least for a short period of time? So we've tried to stay on top of this as best we can. We still are working on a day-to-day basis of information that's being shared with us by the Nassau County Health Department. They've been very, very good in letting us know. For example, two days ago, we just found out that not only kids who have, or people who have come back from China, but now they've added to that list Italy, Iran, Japan, and South Korea. Anybody entering this country, from any of those countries right now, are put on a watch list and will be asked to, what they call voluntarily isolate themselves for a period of 14 days when they re-arrive here in the United States. So that being said, we will continue to stay on top of this. We have gotten calls in my office from people who have said, please help us understand what's going on. And so we ask them, have you read your emails? No. Have you looked at the website? No. So we've been trying to use either email or the website. We are going to rely most heavily, since we have to do it pretty much on a day-to-day basis, we're going to rely on our website as the first placement of information as it becomes available to us, should it affect the schools in any way whatsoever. So tomorrow, what we're going to do is, you know Mr. Bartel's voice a lot better than mine on the robo-calls, but at some point tomorrow, you're going to hear from him again. And what we're going to do is that, that's a forced entry into the lives of every, or a forced intrusion into the lives of everybody in this community who have children in the schools, essentially telling them, please go to the website if you have questions about what the school district is. We will also put on there any information that is shared with us on a regular basis, from whatever the professional organization that is intersecting with us and/or with the state department or the health department. It will not go always a primary piece of information, but we will provide it as supplementary information should anybody wants to look at responses that are suggested by others in more depth. So we are trying on a daily basis to stay on top of this as best we can. We are working assiduously to cooperate and work with every agency that has an interest in maintaining the safety of our communities, the safety of everybody in this room, and at the same time, maintaining the continuity of instruction in our schools and in our communities. So on that basis, I know we talked about it earlier, even though we usually wait until after the budget is presented to open the microphone, I would suggest, and I know that, not me, but we were just talking about it earlier, it would be a good idea, if there are any questions that people have that they would like to bring to our attention or any questions that they have, period, about things that they may have heard, this would be a great opportunity to go to the microphone and bring up those questions.
Before they get in, can I just jump in?
Oh, I'm sorry, right.
So what are we doing for, to... So what are we doing for, to, in the schools, to help our kids wash their hands, like throughout the day? Since that's like the number one thing.
We did a variety of things, I know that, where's Nor, oh, there you are. We have to get used to this, reconfiguration, right. You know, we are encouraging our staff to encourage kids. We are encouraging our staff to do the same. I think what we may have to do is go back and revisit that. I know that Noreen just sent around something that we received earlier today in the mail, which is like a little poster that we can put up in the buildings to remind people to regularly wash their hands and do so very thoroughly. Noreen, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
You know, of course, we've asked our principals and administrators to make sure that reminding students to do that, I think the teachers have been pretty good about reminding them as well. But the graphics that Dr. Jay just referred to were some really good visuals that we just asked today the principals to post in bathrooms, main offices, because the little ones may not be reading the fine details, but they could really see the kind of action figures telling them what to do. So it's just kind of constant reminders, not just for the children, but for ourselves, be really mindful of those, you know, four or five highlighted things, washing your hands, trying not to touch your face, not shaking hands with people unnecessarily, just being careful of, you know, all of those hygiene advice that they have been giving over and over again. I've heard it so many times now, and hopefully it'll become, you know, really just a habit, good habits.
Yeah, by the way, you know, a question has come up about masks and using them. We don't want people who are healthy to wear masks. The health department has said, you're wasting your time. It's really not a good way, it doesn't protect you really a whole lot from anything. However, if you're sick, you should wear a mask. What it does is protect others from, if you are not feeling well.
Sick or your child's sick, they should stay home.
I was just going to say.
That's really important. If you are sick or your child is sick, stay home.
Yeah, stay home, right, right. So Kathy?
I have a question. I just want to know if you've heard anything about, from IB regarding what happens if we're closed and seniors and students have to take IB exams in early May? What happens with that and graduation? I'm sure you don't have any.
I will tell you that, I was in Albany yesterday, and I was meeting with the commissioner and chancellor and a number of other people who are representing the state department with a number of school districts. All of those questions have come up. We don't yet have answers for all of them, and the reason is, is that in all likelihood in New York, you're not going to have all of the schools closed, you're going to have a selective number of schools. We're going to have to look very carefully, you know, in the past, just to give you an example, I know that there have been individual regions that have been canceled from time to time. Kids cannot be punished because they are being told to stay home for safety reasons. So we've got to figure out how to do that. I don't think anybody's graduation is going to be put into jeopardy. I'm not going to address the IB, I'm going to ask John to do that, but we have gotten correspondence from Dave Weiss, who now is the representative of IB for the United States. John?
Working backwards, they don't have plans for the May exams yet. They're doing that on a need-to-know basis. They are asking schools, based on a correspondence we received earlier, later last week, to be proactive. In other, this is the time of the year, for instance, that we're uploading all the student work, it's not the terminal exam, to try to get that ahead of time as possible. They've been, there are other agencies that won't affect us. For instance, a student may, from another IB world school, take an exam in another school if the visiting school agrees to, and they ask people to be hosts if they all can. But most of the schools that have canceled already are in China and Japan, which will, so it's very regionalized. They don't have a battle plan yet for the May exams. Neither does the college board. They haven't put out a public statement yet. So I, that might actually be smart, rather than put out a plan that probably would be immature at best, because it's unfolding so quickly, I think it's better that they hold off a little bit before they come up with an action plan.
Yeah, it's going to be tough for us with the IB because they're right around the corner, but, you know, the Regents exams in June, you know, what we are really looking at internally and at the state level as well, is finding programs that are complementary to what it is that we regularly do and what our curriculum looks like, even though the sequence may not be identical to the way in which it's presented, let's say here. The units of study are comparable to what you would expect someone to learn, whether to be taking either the English regions, the, you know, one of the two, the two social studies regions, or math, or one of the sciences, and using them electronically to provide kids opportunity to stay abreast of the information they would normally get in the classroom so that they are adequately prepared for the exam. My guess is the exams are going to go forward, and then they're going to try to clean up that mess once it's done. I'm not sure exactly if that's what's going to happen, but we, we who have been talking about this are trying to figure out ways to make sure that kids can stay current with their instruction so that they can adequately be prepared for the exam, since in all likelihood, every student in New York State is not going to be affected. We should not stop those who are prepared for it to take the exam. So we'll have to deal with those things as they come online. We're going to do everything we possibly can to make sure whether kids are in the schools or at home, that they're going to be adequately prepared to take the exam. The issue that John raised with regard to where you take the exam and under what conditions, that's a whole other issue that we're going to have to deal with, and we're going to have to deal with that with the state because of the security issues that are associated with the Regents exams. Well, lots more to follow, and we'll keep the community abreast as it becomes available, all this information as it becomes available to us.
Just going back to hygiene and keeping things clean, we know that screens are dreadful to spread.
I'm sorry, what?
Screens.
Would you do me a favor? Could you go to the microphone?
Sure.
The only reason is, is because...
I'd love to borrow it.
You got away with it, Kathy, but we, yes.
You got away with it, but I don't, that's not fair. So we know that screens are dreadful for retaining germs, that the coronavirus can live for up to nine days on a screen. Is there any kind of plan to get wipes so that we can make sure that the screens are being wiped down so that nothing can be spread that way? Yeah? Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, we do know, by the way, that in 5th grade through 12th grade, you own your own screen, you own your own phone, so I understand what you're saying. In the elementary buildings and in some of them, I think, we'll have to take a look at it. I don't know what the base is and whether or not cleaning the screen, in fact, kills the virus.
Depends what you clean it with, I guess.
Pardon me? What's that?
It would depend what you clean it with, I suppose, like alcohol.
You know, we're not permitted to use anything that's alcohol-based.
I thought the state was planning on changing, or you could appeal to be allowed to use alcohol-based.
I, look, the governor on Monday night started working with the state head department and trying to come up with a list of, an amended list on a temporary basis. I'm not at all sure that alcohol-based substances or, in fact, Clorox-based substances are in fact going to be permitted in the schools. They're still looking at chemicals. We've gone back to the manufacturer to make sure that everything that we're using, in fact, kills the virus, and we've been assured from them that they have done. John Scalisi was here tonight, and Robert probably could go into more detail as to exactly what those chemicals are, no, I mean, the products are, but whatever you use usually at home is probably alcohol-based. It evaporates very quickly and would, in fact, be effective. We don't use that in the schools, I would encourage you to do it at home, at this point, yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, so you'll keep us updated as you get, yep.
Can we look into something? Because in the elementaries, the iPads stay.
Yeah, they stay in the school.
So, and is the iPads assigned to a specific student in the school, or is it just go to the cart and take your iPad? Excuse me?
In 5th grade.
Might be.
We will look.
Prudent for us to do a little research that way.
That's part of the list of things that we're going to be getting back as to how to clean the screens, and not only the screens, by the way, and the other thing that we're concerned about are the keyboards.
And that's something we can't have the children do, so it has to be staff.
Right, and we don't, that's something that I'm not sure that our custodians should be asked to do as well. So we're looking at that, John, and we don't have an answer yet.
As information goes out, we're going to put it on our website, we'll tweet it and put it on Facebook as well?
Yes, we can put it on all of the ways in which we communicate. The main source, the original source, will always be on our website. Not everybody has Facebook. Everybody has access, for the most part, to our, to our website.
Yes.
But they have.
But you have to go to your website, whereas if it's being tweeted, you see it versus...
I understand.
It's a little more passive, so it's more likely. What's going on with our app, Chris? Dr. Pelletieri?
The app is being built, it's still, our expectation is still that it would be coming out in June, so, yeah, that's much later on. No, not currently. We have our current app, so we can still.
Well, is our current app functional?
Sure, yes.
I haven't been getting much.
Yeah, we.
Are you not pushing anything out?
No, we haven't been pushing out as much. So the idea was to post things on the website and push people to the website.
Go ahead.
But again, if we push something out, it sort of reminds people to go to the website, right? Hey, it's like a slap in the face.
Mr. Bartel's.
Sorry.
Okay. Slap people in the face, if you like. Mr. Bartel's is going to call everyone tomorrow, kind of tap on the shoulder and say, please go to the website, so that'll be, and we'll work with Ms. Peralta, who will help us push out in every way possible that we can, whether it's Twitter or Facebook or, and the like. Sure. MySpace, I think I have a MySpace.
Your Hotmail.
Just one thing, some parents are still not getting emails from the district. I know when we, after the whole summer palaver, there are still parents who don't always receive emails, so if I can suggest that the PTA is also asked to spread information and help pass information out, I think that would be great as well, because we really need to.
The reason why we're doing what we're doing tomorrow and going on the robo-call is virtually that, that's 100% of the people will receive that message, to go to the website. We try as best we can, I know the elementary principals, I don't know how many people are not receiving emails at this point. It was.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Right, I mean, there are people in this room who aren't receiving emails, so, and of course, we don't know who's not receiving them because they don't know that they didn't receive one.
So it might be advantageous to have the PTAs do it and say, if you're not, if you have received anything from the district, then reach out.
Should they contact district office? Who should they, if they become aware that they're not receiving?
I called the district office twice and I'm still not getting one.
So what guidance should we give parents from the PTA if they're not receiving?
Go to the website. This is what we've been trying to say to people.
No, Kelly means.
Use the website as the primary source of information.
If Kelly means they're not getting email, how can we tell them what's instructions?
Tomorrow, they're going to get a robo-call.
Dr. Jay. Right, but moving forward.
She means, how should they understand if they're not getting?
Well, we're going to push it out on all of, all.
Dr. Jay, listen.
No, we're going to.
What she's asking is, if they're not getting district email.
I understand.
What instructions should we give them on how to contact the district and tell them that they're not getting district email, period? Not about coronavirus, just in general.
Yes, that was my question.
I'm not sure why, if, when you called my off, did you call my office?
I called the administration office. My husband will get an email, but I don't get one.
Would you call my office?
Can I say something?
They're getting them and not the wives, we didn't understand that.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
So there were people in the middle school that weren't getting their emails, and what I would encourage you to do is to call the school, because the people who do the ConnectEd or the Blackboard, like the secretary in my school that does it, found that for one family, the husband got the email, the wife did not, and it was because the emails were on one line, so not, not.
First, right.
Not separated by a semicolon or something, so therefore, there should have been two separate entries. No, in our, in our, in our system, in power schools, in our system. So once the, once the secretary fixed that, made a separate entry, now they're getting both. So I think it's something that they can call, and we should, at the building level, know how to put the emails in. Personally speaking, I don't, but I'm saying there are people that do. So that's, that's what we've been doing.
Jackie and Odette, I think Ms. Flanagan puts in directly, right?
Don't call him.
So let me say that we have a means by which to see if the emails are open, if they've been delivered properly. We get a list, we then push those out again, so we've been getting better and better at that. As we mentioned, we're building our new app and a new email system and contact system, it's called School Messenger. That's going to be coming online, actually, prior to June. We're very close to doing that, and that will rectify all these issues with Power School and all these emails. So one thing you could do is call central office, and Sue Flanagan, Dr. Jay, secretary herself, is sitting there with Odette or Jack, typing in proper emails so people can get those emails. So in this case, we're talking about putting things on the website, but in general, if you're not getting email, you can certainly call the school or call central office, and we will work to rectify that. And then all of that will be rectified as we move to this new system.
Right, the problem that Sheila just brought up may be the problem that you're experiencing, since you just said your husband gets it. Reverse it, put yours in first and his second, then your, no.
But this was.
We need, what we, I'm only kidding, what we really need to do, it's, this is not your problem, it's ours. And when we put it in, it's how we enter this, and if a mistake has been made, it's on us, but, you know, listening to what Sheila was just saying, it may be a better idea, call the school, all right? That may be the better way to do it.
Can we somehow advertise that to the whole public?
You know what, we can, we can put it, we can do it tomorrow in the robo-call, when Robert does it. We could just add another 30 minutes to the call.
That's fine.
Right, yeah.
Better to be thorough.
It might be something we have to do a few times just to get the word out to people, you know, take to.
Any other questions on the coronavirus update? All right, thank you very much. Good move on to the proposed 2020-2021 budget.
Yeah, last week, we limped along without Mr. Bartel's. This week, we are honored by his presence tonight and his annual presentation on the budget. So I'm just going to turn it over to Robert, please, if you don't mind, go right ahead.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Wanted to start with just kind of a review of the schedule of the budget. Today, we're just going to go over some general information about the district, and some of it was probably covered last week with Doctors Pelletieri and Leahy, but I wanted to kind of go through a general description of different things that we do within the district while our principals and directors are here. So we started out, February 5th, we had a budget work session, we talked about the entire budget process and the financial condition of the district. Last week, you heard from, as I mentioned, Doctors Leahy and Pelletieri on curriculum and PPS programs. One thing that has happened in between is we had to finalize our tax levy cap, which we did. Our tax levy cap officially is 2.03%, and the tax levy that will be proposed will be 2.01%, so it'll be slightly, no, we're under, under the cap. 2.01 versus 2.03. So it'll be just under the cap. So we'll just need a simple majority to pass the budget this year.
You may want to explain that for a minute, Robert, what, why the cap looks, in other words, it was publicized as being 1.81% for the state, why is it now a little over 2%?
Sure, there, the.
Pardon me?
The tax levy cap is a formula from the state which goes through a number of calculations, one of which is used as the CPI, and that's typically referred to as the 2% tax cap. For this year, that was 1.81%, but that's just one piece of the formula. There are a number of other calculations which are based on growth within the district. There is something called a growth factor, which is the number of new properties that are developed within the district. In Rockville Center, we have very little new development going on, doesn't account for home renovations or such, it's really conversions of land into new properties. Then we have exclusions based on some revenues that we receive, such as pilot payments or payments in lieu of taxes. We have a small number of properties that are receiving that within the district, the largest known one of that is Avalon Properties, and those monies need to be subtracted from what we can levy to the community. We also have exclusions for capital improvements and debt service. Those come off the tax. Those come off the tax cap formula. So, those are not considered when we actually do the formula, so they're considered exclusions. So, when we go through this calculation, our number for this year, our tax cap number is 2.03%. That number will vary district to district. We've had, I've seen some preliminary figures from some other districts who may be up around 4% for a tax cap. Others may be down as low as 1%. So, it all depends on your exclusions and what's happening within the individual school district. But that's where we are. We're at, we will be under our cap at 2.01%. We're kind of right there at that, at that 2% number. Today, we have our principals and directors here. We're going to kind of go over some different programs that we have in the district. I have some questions come up that we need the principals and directors for, you know, they're here to jump in. After I go through my presentation, I'm going to talk a little bit about capital projects. And I think that's really where we need to focus tonight. There are a number of different capital projects and things that we need throughout the district. And it's good to have all of our administrators here to talk about their own buildings. I think March 18th, our next budget work session, probably should go through staffing and use that, that day to talk about the different staffing requests, levels we have within the district, and any changes that we may be looking at for next year. And then, on April 2nd, would be kind of a follow-up to staffing, any, any other miscellaneous things that we need to do, if we need to come back and make some changes. Work that out at the April 2nd meeting and hopefully try to come to a finalized budget. April 21st, we have to, we are going to have our preliminary budget hearing. That will be the last chance that the district has to make a change to the budget. On May 6th, we will have a formal budget hearing, but we cannot make any changes at that time. It's a requirement from the state that we have that hearing once the budget is set. And then, May 19th is the budget vote and election. Copies of the budget were made available. They're online. I believe there are copies outside. We put together the budget in a line-by-line format as prescribed by the state. The state does require us to code our budgets in different pieces, in different segments. So, when you look at a budget code, you'll see four different segments. The first being the function, which is the functional area of the expense. Could be a business office expense, an instructional expense, a guidance expense. The second piece is the object. That indicates the type of expense it is, whether it's a salary, whether it's a piece of equipment, supply. The third segment is the location. And for us, that would be which building we're in. Building 01 is Covert. Progresses through to 07, which is the high school. Locations of 10 are generally district-wide expenses that are not assigned to one particular building. And the last segment is the program expense, is where we try to separate out some of our different programs, whether it's math, a science expense, something like that. We have a lot more codes broken out this year. Last year, we had to, for the first time, put together a budget based on our buildings. It has made it very difficult to put the budget together in that fashion because we do have lots of turnover. There are transfers between buildings. And when you look at the costs, it, there's so many different variables, building to building, that it's not an easy comparison when you try to compare, you know, one building's expenses to another. For example, Covert has a core program. Hewitt has the RISE program, which are two different programs that the other elementary schools don't have. So, we need to be careful when making comparisons if we're trying to look between buildings. Also, there's an explanation of budget document, which is on the website for prior years. We'll be putting that together when we conclude a budget and have a budget figure for this year. So, before the budget vote, we'll have that available in all of our buildings for this year. That's a large document, which includes a number of different pieces. Includes the budget that we have. It includes our report cards that are generated by the state for our educational system. The, all K to 12 scores are in there. We have administrative salary disclosures are in there. Property tax report card will be in there. So, there's lots of different pieces that go into that explanation of budget. And again, that's, that document is online for prior years, if anybody's interested in looking at that and seeing where we were last year. The format tonight, we'll talk about is basically, we'll go through some general instruction, including classroom and the specials that we have in the district. Talk a little bit about pupil personnel services, athletics, or after-school and special programs, some technology services. Well, technology services, after-school programs, I believe, were discussed last, last week with Dr. Leahy and Dr. Pelletieri. Talk about transportation, our administration here in the district, and some support services that we provide. Starting off with elementary, we have a class cap at our elementary school. First of all, our elementary schools are K to 5. We do have class caps of 25. That has changed over our history. We were up in grades 3 to 5, up to 28 students in a class back in 05, 06. We had brought that down to 26 students in 2000, up to 2010, 11. And then, since then, we've been at a cap of 25 students across K to 5. So, that's, that's where we've been on the, on the, on the class caps. We have specialized programs at the elementary schools. Stellar, which is a lot more than a library program, provides additional enrichment activities, things such as robotics, to our elementary school students. We also have a FLESS program, which is a foreign language in elementary schools program to provide additional foreign language instruction at the elementary level before they get into the middle school and the more formalized foreign languages. We provide physical education, art and music at all of our elementary schools. We have differentiated instruction in our different buildings. So, whether it's done in Stellar, we have, all of our teachers are terrific. They go through training for differentiated instruction so they can address the different needs of different students and keep, you know, all of our students motivated, depending on, depending on their capabilities. We have academic intervention services, things such as reading recovery. We have a program called Math Implementation, which are different programs to continue to assist all students to, you know, do their best and make strides in all different academic areas. We also have permanent substitutes. You'll see this at the secondary level as well. These are a critical component in our elementary schools to maintain consistency in our instruction. We instituted these a number of years ago. So, instead of having daily substitutes that get called in that don't really know your buildings, we have permanent subs in each of our buildings who know the staff, know the students, and can jump right in to fill in when we have regular staff absent. The secondary school, I don't think we have a specific class size, but we try to keep them to under 25 as well, where we can. We have, at the high school, we have our International Baccalaureate Program, which we've also expanded to the middle school with the Middle Years Program. At the high school, we have both a standard and higher-level program for students as they're progressing. And some students will choose the more rigorous programs as they go through, go through their courses of study. We have all the typical instructional programs at the high school, ELA, math, social studies, science and foreign language, as well as physical education, health, art and music. So, all those programs are there. We also have technology, home and careers in business. We have academic intervention services as well at the high school, provided by our instructional staff and teaching assistants. We have a greenhouse program, which is our alternative high school. And we have those permanent subs as well. Should mention, the middle school is a 6 to 8 middle school. Again, there may be some people watching who don't, not familiar with the district, which is really the purpose of going through this. So, our middle school is 6 to 8. High school is 9 to 12. And also, in the high school, we do have a number of different electives for all of our students, things such as TV production, play production, wood design, photography, and coding, just to name some of the few electives that we have for our students. Pupil Personnel Services, I'm sure Dr. Leahy went through these, but we have special education teachers to deal with all of our students who have special needs. We have guidance counselors who work K through 12. We have social workers and psychologists to address the mental health and well-being of all of our students. We have one-to-one support for those students who need those for educational or behavioral needs. We have our Core and RISE programs. Those are special education programs for some more disabled students. Core program right now is at Covert School and also in the middle school and the high school. RISE is a newer program right now that's only in the elementary school, at Hewitt School. And that should be moving into the middle school, not next year, two years. Be moving into the middle school. Also have additional services, speech, vision, ESL, occupational and physical therapy. Our athletic program, we saw a number of the culmination of those tonight with some of our awards, but it begins in the 7th grade. We have our middle school teams, which are combined 7th and 8th grades. We have 11 boys' teams and 10 girls' teams. And we have over 700 athletes participating in those programs at the middle school. The high school, we have both JV and varsity teams. Have 28 boys' teams and 28 girls' teams. And we have over 1,000 student athletes participating at the high school level. We did implement a few years ago a turf field at Southside High School, which has been a great improvement over the dirt field we've had there. We also have a practice field on the back. Both of those fields get a tremendous amount of use during the season and the off-seasons, weekends also, as students find, they come to those, that facility. And it's just, it's a great, great facility for student athletes to use while they're participating with their teams or on weekends. We are land poor, so it's very critical that, you know, we, we have good facilities. We do need to go off-site for a number of our fields because we just don't have the field space for our varsity teams on our campuses. We do provide transportation to those off-site fields and also to all away games. Athletics also involves coordination of all the scheduling. Bosie's does the scheduling, and our athletic director works closely with them for that. And they're also responsible for the referee fees. We do also have a few teams which are combined with other schools, such as our swim team. After-school and special programs, we do have extracurricular programs at all grade levels, clubs and intramurals, both the elementary, middle and high schools. We have, each building has their own individualized programs at the elementary schools. So, we try not to have a cookie cutter design. We allow each building principal to implement their own programs. So, you do find some changes between buildings and some of the programs that they offer. We have the Project Grade Program, which we hold in the morning and in the afternoon, before school and after school. Those are programs which assist parents who need or want to drop their children off before school or need us to hold them after school until they can pick them up. We do work with them on their homeworks and provide snacks and something for them to eat at those times. And it's, it's a great program for the kids and the parents. We have in Saturday Ace Program, which is another enrichment program that we hold during the year, summer program. Obviously, it happens over the summer, another excellent opportunity for students to participate in other enrichment activities and continue to participate in, in the schools. Our Community Education Program is an evening program, mostly for adult education. We have a number of programs there, which, for our community residents. And also, at the middle school, we, we do have, it's not a Project Grade Program, but it's a TLC Homework Helpers Program, which assists students who are having difficulty and, again, gives them something to do after school. Teachers work with them, instructional staff work with them to improve their, their skills. Transportation, we have two mileage requirements for transportation. Students in kindergarten through 6th grade are eligible for transportation if they live at least 0.8 miles from the school. And 7 to 12, the distance requirement is 1.3 miles from the school. That's, every year, we get questions on that. Those are, regulations have been in place for a number of years. They were put in place to address segregation issues a number of years ago in the district, and that's why those numbers are like that. We do get transportation aid based on those transportation mileage limits. The state, interestingly, is much higher than that for transportation requirements. The state only requires us to transport from kindergarten through 8th grade, 2 miles or more, and 9th through 12th grade at 3 miles and more. So, we are well under those transportation limits. To change that, we would have to have a vote in the district. The community would have to support a proposition to change those mileage requirements. Bus transportation we have is for both in-district and out-of-district students. We have contracted routes where we have a main carrier. They do the majority of our in-district routes, as well as our large out-of-district routes. And we have different carriers which we coordinate through competitive bids and cooperative bids, who work with the remaining out-of-district schools and placements. We have a handful of buses in the district that we use for special education students and for some small private school routes. We also provide railroad passes for some students in lieu of a bus. Some students can use the train to get to certain schools. And we do have late buses at all of our schools with more than 10 students. So, just some information that's, we don't always talk about, but I thought this was a good time to, to bring it up. Administration of the district, we'll find if, if, if people look at other school districts, we're really very lean in administration. We have assistant superintendent and three assistant superintendents, one for curriculum instruction. And there is a curriculum coordinator that works with, with him. We have chairpersons of CSC and CPSE, who work with the assistant superintendent for PPS. And myself, I have Director of Facilities that works with me. Directors of our curriculum programs, we have Director of Music and the Arts and Director of Physical Education, Athletics and Health. Many school districts have a number of other directors. They'll have Directors of English, Directors of Social Studies and so forth. We just have those two directors. We have principals in all of our buildings. We have assistant principals at the middle school and the high school. We also have a supervisor of guidance at the high school. Instead of chairpeople in our buildings, we have what we call academic facilitators. So, instead of having a chairperson who doesn't have any classes, trying to coordinate programs, we have our regular teachers, who are, some of whom are paid a stipend, to coordinate the activities of their individual programs, such as science or, or English. And we also have two academic facilitators at the elementary schools at our two larger schools, Hewitt and Wilson. They both have an academic facilitator in their buildings to assist the principal, due to the size of their buildings. Also, at the middle school, we have NYPD coordinators to assist the administrative staff there in working with the teachers to implement that program. In addition to that, we have support service staff. In addition to that, we have support service staff in all of our buildings. We have clerical staff, custodians and maintenance staff, nurses and occupational therapists, teacher aides, security guards, bus drivers, cafeteria staff. So there are quite a few support staff throughout all of our buildings. And just talk briefly about the numbers piece. I'm not sure how large those numbers are, but you can see these, this pie chart really shows all the Principals and Directors and what their budgets are. Most of the small budget slices are the, all the elementary schools and the middle school. The very small budgets compared to some of the other programs, and in terms of the overall budget, these are just very, very tiny pieces. These budgets are really just for supplies and a little bit of maintenance items, but any of the larger purchases are really done centrally. So the elementaries and middle school really did not have a lot of funds available for their discretion, their teachers and their programs. For implementing something on a larger scale, we'll do that centrally. The high school athletics and music and the arts are a little larger budgets. They have a lot more that go into that. There's some transportation in there, especially regarding athletics. You have equipment requests and repairs. It's a great many more programs at the high school and equipment purchases in all of those areas. We get to the large pieces of the budget. Central office, about 2.4 million goes for things like general insurance, legal fees, BOSI's administration, auditing costs are some of the items in the, the larger items in that central administration figure. Our facilities and maintenance budget is about 2.1 million. That's for all of our utilities, maintenance of buildings throughout the year, supplies, equipment costs. We have our contract transportation, which is almost 3.4 million. That's for all of our home-to-school transportation, our late buses, athletics, field trips, all the different transportation falls under that. We have transfers. We have transfers to our Capitol Line, which we're going to talk about in a little while. That's really for this discussion tonight and all the different projects that we're, we would like to talk about. We have transfers for debt service, which are bonds, which you've already had, and those are debt services that's on the books. We have transfers for our lunch program, which we really have not had to use the last couple of years because it's been completely self-sustaining, including all of the benefits associated with that program, so we have not had to use that over the last couple of years. And transfers to our federal programs, we're required to provide certain programs over the summer for special education services. We're reimbursed for a certain amount, but there is also a certain amount that the district is responsible for, so that's the reason for that transfer. Then we get to the last two items, which combined make up $98 million out of our $122 million budget, and that's all of our staffing and benefits. So all, that entire amount goes to really personnel in the district, so that's where the great majority of our costs are. We have close to 1,000 employees in the district, almost 800 full-time, so that's, that's really where all that, that money goes. And that's it, my presentation. I think at this point, I'd like to talk about the capital items. I don't know if we want to talk anything about my presentation, wait until we finish this.
Just to reiterate, you're gonna, we're gonna go deeper into the staffing things next time.
Yeah, at the next meeting, I'll talk about, just mentioned overall number of staffing, but I'll talk about where the staffing are, how they're broken down by building, changes that we may or may not see or expect for next year, and new, meaning new positions that we may be adding. So I'll get into all that at our, at our next budget meeting. The handout that I have outside for capital item possibilities, I just want to explain it briefly. I have sorted it by building, and what we tried to do was include all the different projects that we could think of or that we've had discussed. So the board has walked around the different buildings and has made some of their own recommendations or heard them from the administration. We've tried to include those on here. Some of these items have been happening over a number of years, so I've tried to categorize them, so the first column you see there is prior year. Some of these were expected to be done for this year. Some of them are in process. We're still planning on doing them with the monies for this year, but I wanted to include them because I'm sure they're still out of contention because they have not been completed, so I wanted to include them on this list. Then I have budget line item. That's where the item may be just covered within our regular budget. You don't need it to have a capital expense for it. It could be included within a regular budget line. There are not too many of those. Then the last two columns are transfer to capital or bond issue. Some of them are clearly bond issues. Some of them would be clearly a transfer to capital where we could deal with them, you know, within the year without too much trouble, but there are going to be some that, you know, we're not sure which category they should fall into. And the last item I have is, you'll see an SS code someplace. SS means smart schools. So we still have five, $600,000 left in our smart schools money. That can only be used for certain items, usually for technology, cameras and so forth is what we've talked about using that for. So when I put in SS, that's, that's where I would think we would utilize that money. So with that said, I'm not sure how, want to proceed through here. I don't know if I should be going through individual items or maybe just pass it to each of the Principals to kind of talk about, maybe get some of the highlights of the items within their, their budget lists?
Yeah, we could do that, and then we have the board members who went on those tours could maybe jump in if there was items they saw as well, so.
Okay.
Start with the lovely Darren Raymar.
Okay, you're in trouble now. So Mr. O'Shea actually walked around with me just recently, last year Mrs. Hackett did, and the two things that are on there right now for prior year are the nurse's office, which we are assured is going to happen this summer at some point, and the drop ceiling in the main office and in my office, which we're, you know, we, we know are happening, so. And, and the nurse's office is, the bathroom is done, it's beautiful. The nurse's office is from 1962. It needs to be done. That was, yeah, a long, long time. As far as the other items, we do need an extra storage shed because we know that if there was to be a bond, which we're hoping there would be consideration of that, it would not happen overnight, and we have a lot of our instruction, all of our AIS is done in the hallway at this point. So, and even our band and orchestras, private, the small group lessons are done in the hallway, so getting some of the other things out of our hallway is necessary. We do need a shed. Changing the auditorium floor. When we beautified the auditorium, the one thing that was not done is the floor. So the new chairs were put on over the old floor, and because they don't match perfectly, it kind of, we've tried, our custodians have done a great job, they cannot get the rust marks off, so it kind of like you have this beautiful auditorium and this floor that doesn't match it. The hallway boys' bathroom definitely does need to be changed for a variety of reasons. You could kind of figure that out, little boys. As far as big-ticket items, we need a new playground, but I know that everybody in the district is in the same boat with that. So I know that's something that we're talking about as a district and how we're going to fund it, how we're allowed to fund it, but it is something, the playground that we have at Covert, I think it was my second year, so that was 20 years ago, that we actually, you know, we actually put it together as a PTA, and one of our teachers, one of our teachers' husbands owns a company that put the matting down for us, so we got away with that 20 years ago. We need some new innovation there. The turf field we've talked about, I know it's been very successful, so that's something to consider. The big thing for us is space. I know that Wilson School is busting at the seams, but so is Covert. Mr. Bartel's actually had the chance to observe one of our music teachers, the orchestra teacher teaching lessons in the front hallway, and it was amazing, I will tell you, to Dr. Zou's credit with his great music staff, the children and the music teacher were focused. I'm not sure how, because people were walking in and out and literally they were playing. We need space.
And it was at arrival too.
It was at arrival too, correct. So it was really stimulate, overstimulating. The two classrooms, when, if we do talk about a bond issue, I have some ideas about that. I don't necessarily know that we need two classrooms. I have things that we might need other than that, but I know that's a discussion in the future. I'm just happy to see that it's on there because we really are busting at the seams at Covert. Resurfacing of the parking lot, that's something that would be great, and of course, the replacement of the auditorium in gym HVAC units, that's really just because there's way too much power in them to actually, we, we don't need as much power, from what I believe, as what we originally, was originally designed years ago. So that's pretty much it. Yes, we just really need space.
Yeah, before Brian starts, I meant to say that in addition to the Principals, we do have input from Director of Music and Athletics about their programs, so there are items on each of these lists that Brian and Carol may, may want to discuss.
Right, I just want to make explicit what's implicit from this. It says more space and maybe two more classrooms, but at some point I would like it explicitly spelled out. We need a music and an art room. At Covert School, both music and art, general music and art are on a cart. Darren alluded to the fact that lessons are taught in the, in the lobby, which, you know, we kind of say, oh, don't they do a great job in this, but it's not good. It's, I can't imagine how those kids learn and how those teachers teach in that environment. And I understand it's the best we can do, but if we're talking about adding space with a bond, we really need space for that, but also general music and general art instruction is now on a cart, which takes time away from the instruction. So if we could make that explicit at some point, if we do a bond, that'd be great.
Couldn't agree more. And that's it? Mr. O'Shea, did I miss anything?
No, the, the storage shed we never talked about, is that, you want to put school supplies in the storage shed?
No, we want to put, we already have one storage shed outside. It's for the additional stuff that's in the hallway that we.
Like?
Some of the cleaning, some of the, the buffer, right, John? What's, what do we currently have in the hallway right now? There's a lot of stuff.
Currently in the hallway, we have our buffing machines, our auto scrubber, additional carts, additional garbage pails, some supplies that should really be kept in an area away from the, the staff and the children. So we do have other items that are, that are kept there, rags, you know, everyday use stuff that could be put in this, in a storage shed. Get it out of the hallways. As Mr. Raymar said, we are busting at the seams over there. The fire marshal, he makes it note every, every year that the stuff that's in the hallway does not belong there, so we really should get it out of there just for safety reasons in itself.
No basi, is there a basement at Covert?
There is, and we have, we've cleaned that basement again and again, and we've gotten rid of things. We actually, when we got our first new custodians several years ago, we spent about three days in there. I spent that with, with him and several teachers, just throwing things out from 1965, but yet we still have many more things in there. And so it's also, there's sand down there because of drainage and things. We, we, there's certain things you can't put down there, like the buffer, it would be, to bring it up every time would be kind of pointless.
Yeah, the actual basement is the boiler room, and right now we have a lot of supplies down there that do not belong down there because they're combustible materials and should be taken out of the boiler room area.
Would they go in the shed?
Yes.
What about freezing? Not a problem?
Most of it's filters, you know, items like that for, for the univentilators and the HVAC system.
So what is the plan to address that now that we just?
Yeah, what's the plan that we do because that shouldn't happen?
We need, that's why we're requesting the shed.
It means move like tomorrow. You can have combustible items in an area that could, that could happen.
We have no place to put it, that's the problem. That's why we need the shed.
That's not.
I, I know, I understand that. We have it far enough away from the boilers.
Is it a steel cabinet?
The, the combustibles, yes.
Yes.
All the paint stuff.
Does it satisfy the fire marshal?
Well, then you should say that.
What's on the other shed?
You mean it sounds like it's a piece of things that are going to blow up.
No, the shed.
The other shed you have.
Sorry, that's what it sounded like.
I'm sorry, but we do have, we have cases of fibers.
We'll be upset if that's very important, that you clarify that.
Yes.
But it's not unsafe.
Yes.
But it's not unsafe.
It's not unsafe, but.
But it's not optimal.
But it's, it's not optimal.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes.
That is correct. They are in the metal, they are in metal, but I'd love to get the metal out too eventually and put it into the shed. Right.
Mr. Raymar, the camera phone for the secretary?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that actually, we have one camera phone in the main office, and if we do not have a security guard for the day, or if Jesse's not there, because our security guard actually is out at lunch with the kids, he's out in the parking lot at the end of a day, at the beginning of the day, only one desk has one. It's impossible to.
Is that true, yeah, what is one, and is that true for all of our elementaries?
In other words, same question.
You have one?
Like when somebody rings the doorbell.
So when somebody rings the doorbell, I don't have it in my office, which I don't necessarily want, but both, we have two desks in the office and only one has one.
Got it.
So, so the camera video is different than the rest of the video? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the front door camera video.
The front door camera is an interactive camera video, so you can talk to the person outside as compared to all of our other cameras where it's just video, there's no interactive capability.
Do the other elementaries have more than one over here?
No, they're all.
One's in there, two.
Wait, your secretary has it or your, or your security person has it?
Both, right. Oh, so, so they have two.
One in the main office and one.
Right, and you only have it at your.
I have one of this, the, of one in the main office and one at the security desk, but in Eric's office, it's, isn't there just one desk? Is there two?
One secretary, correct.
Right. I don't know.
Got it.
I don't know.
Need an additional.
I need an additional one, I, I need, I need another one. I need another one. If you try, like, for example, I'll give you an example. This morning, there was variety show rehearsal, and it was me in the office at one point, alone, and I'm trying to answer the door, I'm trying to answer the phone, and everyone's trying to, and everyone was working and doing things, but the security guard was also in front of the building, so.
Got it.
We need, I, you know.
You need an additional.
Even, even asking another teacher to help me in the office is pointless if I can't have them do that.
Thank you.
Makes sense.
Thank you. John, anything else at Covert you wanted to add?
No.
Nope? Hewitt?
I just want, so Robert, I'm sorry, just, when you're denoting with the X, it means that you anticipate it will be in this year's capital?
No, not necessarily. No, we, we need to go, we'll need to go through the, after these discussions, we're going to need to go through them and verify what can be in there and what can't, and how many of these.
We'll need numbers.
So maybe it would be beneficial to have them prioritize.
We'll need numbers.
Well, we're going to go out and get numbers, but we didn't want to spend the time going out and get them if.
Somebody said.
We weren't planning on, you know, looking at that for, for next year.
So we'll get the numbers for the things that we're going forward with, and then we can help prioritize them.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so Hewitt?
The most important item on this list for me would be adding the primary playground. I have a playground that some repairs have been done, thank you, Mr. Scalisi, and the most important thing for me would to be add a primary playground that could be used for kindergarten, first and second grade, and I would like to use it for our Rise program. The playground that we have right now is for, the size of it is too large for our younger children, so that's the most important item for me on this list. Recently, the air conditioning unit in the library was taken out, so that needs to be replaced before the warm weather comes, so that would be a very important item on this list for me. We have had some buckling in the gym floor, that some attempts were made to fix that, but that's still an ongoing repair that needs, needs to be done at Hewitt School. And most recently, we've been talking about creating a space within Room Nine, which is our. our RISE two classroom timeout space, and the plans are underway. That's a very, very important aspect on this list. And we are still having some roofing issues. That would be my other important item on this list of capital possibilities.
John, you also went to Hewitt?
Yes.
Yes, John came and walked in.
The roofing repairs, you know, I think need immediate attention because it's now doing damage to the floor below it.
Hubler was there today, but I don't know what the resolution of that was. When they do come, I know it's an interesting roof. They don't go on the roof when they come, you know, on the tile roof. So they go inside the building, and they also do like visual inspections from outside, but I don't know, you know, how that works.
John, can you add? I'm sorry.
Yeah, when they come and inspect the roof, they do a visual count, count the slates that are missing. They don't actually go on the roof because of the danger of the roof being up there. So they do a visual count, and then they give me a count of how many need to be replaced. They also were looking inside in the attic area for any other areas that may need to be addressed instead of physically going up on the roof. I did receive a quote from John Hubler Roofing for Hewitt to replace, I believe it's 30 slate tiles, and he was going back today to look at it, and he's supposed to be with me this week to discuss any additional work that needs to be done.
And do we think that replacing 30 slate tiles will fix these leaks?
I don't...
I only ask because we've done other things in the middle school that we thought would fix leaks, and it did not.
Yeah, well, the slate definitely has to be replaced. We did notice that there may be some issues with the flashing around one of the chimneys, and that's why he was going up in the attic to investigate that today. I haven't heard back from him as of yet, so he said he'll be in touch by the end of the week. So hopefully tomorrow, I'll have an answer on that.
I'm not a roofer, but when you can see the sky from inside the building, something's wrong.
That usually is... That's something.
I agree.
But again, we're not going to wait for a capital improvement line. We're going to take... We're taking care of that right now, just to be clear.
Yes.
Okay.
And the library AC was something that we talked about back in September. That will be taken care of.
Yes, that's scheduled for the April break.
Okay.
Anything else for Hewitt?
I mean, the walls in the RISE room, we're still in the process of discussing what we're doing and figuring that out.
They're... We're past the process of discussing it. We designed it, and we're ordering the materials that have been ordered or will be ordered very shortly. We're planning on doing it over the April break.
Do we have a rationale for why the gym floor is buckling?
The gym floor, this has been... This took place quite some time ago, and we tried to have it repaired. I brought Milburn Flooring in. They assured me that it was pinned. I was actually on the phone with him again today, say it was not pinned. They put some relief cuts in it to try and get that buckle down. I did tell him he needs to get his flooring guy back there, plus my representative for Milburn needs to come and take a look at it, because if not, then that's an area that's going to have to be removed and replaced. But I need a definite answer. He assured me that the guy was coming back, the gentleman that supposedly did the pinning was coming back to address it again and repin it if need be.
Oh, so we paid for it to be repaired, but it wasn't repaired. Right now, we're not going to pay for it again, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
What's the timeframe on that, John? Because I know once the summer comes, we have the ACE program really comes into that building, and there's not a lot of space. So what's the timeframe on that?
I'm hoping within the next couple of days, because I did speak to him today, because I had some other issues I had to talk to him about.
Because then Mrs. Price is also going to be at it for gym. Once they replace it, can they do that over a break?
They would just replace the area that's buckled. They wouldn't have to replace the whole gym floor.
I understand that, but she has two gym classes at once, and she has lunch in there, so I'm just wondering if they can do that over a break?
Yes, they could.
Okay.
I'm off of this list, but I've... Both the custodian and the principal just put a request to me that maybe we give Hewitt a one-year break for major things at the school and move the ACE program to another school. Just something... I'm just throwing it out there. It seemed to make sense that give them a little bit of time to work on some projects there and relocate for one year, just to give them that little bit of break. We'll talk about that another time. I'm just... As we're going down the list, that's why I'm throwing it out there.
Is there a Hewitt?
How do we... I'm sorry. Add additional PE storage space? How do we...
I did. That's only if there's a bond and there's an extension to the school. So I grabbed it a while ago.
Okay.
Because right now, the tables for lunch are stored in what was the PE closet. So I'd like to gain my space back.
What do we keep in that room that we, I guess, transformed a couple of years ago? The tables go in there or not anymore?
We get many of the tables, but they all do not fit in that closet.
Okay.
That was the elevator room?
It was a closet and on the backside of the closet. Do you remember what was on the other side, Robert? We went to that storage space.
Yeah, it was PTA storage.
Yeah.
Mr. Walter, Riverside?
Thank you. Okay, so I had the pleasure of welcoming Mrs. McNulty into Riverside to do our mini walk-through, along with Mr. Scalisi and Mr. Toledo, our head custodian. I'll just jump right in from the top. The first line item here, replace asphalt parking lot. As you know, we do not have a parking lot, so we do park on the street, so we're not asking for a replacement parking lot. But the blacktop area is the primary area where we have intake dismissal, where the children play at recess. It has been some time. There are a number of cracks, patch jobs, peaks and valleys, hazards, and ultimately, I think it's time for the entire blacktop area to be resurfaced so that the kids have a level playing field, so to speak.
Can I just interrupt you?
Of course.
We have had this for two years. Where two years ago, we said we would do it. It's the primary area for Riverside children to play. It needs to be done because it's kind of unsafe. We've talked about this, and now it's on a bond line? That doesn't make any sense at all to me. Two years ago, you said you would do it, you would... We would make every attempt to do it last year, and now we're pushing it to a bond. You know, that's unacceptable to me, because we... It's not like we're just bringing it up. It's a long time.
I agree.
We need to move that out of the bond and put it on. Okay. Sorry.
It's okay. Continuing down to line item two, again, thinking about the space that we have at Riverside, which is limited for our students to play and interact. This small piece of dirt that we have on the corner, it would really be nice if we could lay some turf over that so the kids can play soccer, they can play tag, play whatever they want outside during recess after school, something that's nice and green and lush that will last. I believe every attempt that has been made to cede that particular area has failed, and it continues to turn into that yucky-looking, grass-ish-type area. So we would like to see some kind of turf put down there if possible, please. Third line item, the main office renovation. Mrs. McNulty had an opportunity to see my office, and I do thank the board, thank Mr. Scalisi, Mr. Bartels for bringing somebody in to really revamp my office. As you know, at Riverside, it is a unique building. The principal's office is separated from the main office, which is kind of weird, but we make it happen. So Mrs. Bach, who had been there for 32 years in that room, it was just kind of the way it was, and we brought it back to life. Somebody came in, I forget the name of the company, but they did a custom job because it is such a unique space, and it's very small in the main office. I have Francine, my new secretary, after Mary Connery retired, and Diana Foreman, our office aide, really crammed in there. So again, something similar to the main office that was done to my office would be great, so Francine can make the office her own. It's really set up for Mary. Mary was there for 20-plus years, and I think that it's time for some refurbishing of the main office, some new furniture, new cabinets, a new desk, new air conditioning unit on the wall, new window, new shades, a complete redo. And I think we can really strategically design the main office to maximize the space more so, because right now, it just feels very clustered. Francine's been cleaning a lot of things out, and I would love to see a main office renovation happen so we can set her up for future success.
And it's an extremely, extremely small space.
Yes.
We're not talking about a huge office, where it really is a small space that I think you could do pretty easily. Something more?
In rooms four and nine, I noticed that, I believe those are the two remaining classrooms that have the old-school tile, possible asbestos tiles. There's buckling as well. There is a dip. You have to kind of walk uphill in one classroom, and then you kind of slide down. There is cracking in those tiles. Most of the other classrooms do have either the newer tile or hardwood. If we could somehow resurface those floors in one way, shape, or form, whether it would be just a quick replacement tile job, or if we could strip them and bring it down to the hardwood or put hardwood under... Excuse me. Yes, underneath however that looks. I'm not exactly positive with how that will go down, but those are the two rooms that stick out where we do have flooring issues. New carpet for the copy center room downstairs. We had also asked for a drop ceiling, and I do thank Mr. Scalisi for making that happen already, because that job was completed, but there is some pretty nasty old carpet that's down there that needs to go. We spoke... I think we all spoke about playground renovations on the wish list as well, so I'll just kind of breeze past that one, but we are in need of that as well. And thinking about the playground surface, whatever that rubber material is, we're having a problem at Riverside as well with tree roots connected to neighbors' homes that are bowing the fences in, that are bringing the asphalt up, that are taking up the... Whatever that rubber padding material is that's been there for some time, starting to see cracks and whatnot due to the tree roots, which kind of barrels into the fencing repairs. When you're looking at Riverside around the rear perimeter of the blacktop on Hendrickson Avenue, running behind the garage in the PTA shed that also runs along the rear playground area, the fencing is also bowing due to the neighbor's trees. There are some old, more rusted areas. Also noticing some sharp edges. I always think about, obviously, the safety of our students when they're playing out there. I don't want anybody getting cut by a rusted fence, but I do think that also ties in with the new asphalt for the blacktop, if that could happen, and new fencing could be somehow also put around that perimeter. That would be helpful as well. Some smaller items, we talked about new entry mats, hallway rubber mats. I did throw window replacements down here. I think that's a big-ticket item. I'm not sure how that replacement project works, but from my understanding, and again, you know, I'm the new guy here, new kid on the block, so I'm just going to hit you with whatever I have. The windows, I don't know, 15 to 18 years old. I believe the gliders have been replaced. I'm not sure what the vision of the board or Rockville Center schools are for a window replacement project of that capacity across multiple schools, but I did list that as an item as well. Thinking about something a little bit simpler, window shades. The ones in most of the classrooms at Riverside are kind of those older stale yellow-looking ones, and many of them are ripped and/or tattered and have lost their functionality. So that would be something nice to have. Classroom reading carpets. This kind of goes along with my vision to create and better diversify and rebuild our classroom libraries. Dr. Pelletieri and Dr. Sempino have been helping to support that vision moving forward, but just thinking about a dedicated area for kids to have independent reading time and have their classroom libraries. I would like to see a classroom, a reading carpet in each classroom. I think that should be a staple in the elementary schools. Faculty bathroom, this is something that Mrs. Bach mentioned to me when we had time to meet over the summer. She said, Eric, please continue to advocate for a faculty bathroom. At Riverside, there is an awkward bathroom in the main office, which is small enough as it is, and there is one in my office. There is a bathroom that is connected to the PDC, which is kind of, in so many words, off-limits. And then there is a faculty bathroom down the hallway, close to the music orchestra and art combo platter room in the way-back corner of the downstairs labyrinth, which was considered to be the faculty bathroom next to it. It was old, it was gross, but I want to thank Mr. Scalisi, Mr. Bartels as well, because the maintenance crew came in prior to the February break, and they redid the entire bathroom from floor to ceiling, and it looks beautiful, and the staff is very appreciative of that already. So thank you very much for getting that job done. That is much appreciated. Outside of that, heating controls. I don't know, John, if there's anything you want to mention about that. I know we've been having some heating discussions, for lack of a better way of putting it, at Riverside. It's been hot, steam heat. You walk in...
There were some issues, and I think...
It hits you in the face.
John's been looking at it with our maintenance staff, and I think we've identified a couple of possible issues that can be corrected.
Yeah, we had a horrible control within and take a look at the system, and they actually went through the whole system. They have parts on order. As soon as the parts come in, they'll be addressing the issues in the building and try and get the building back in control and get the heat modulated properly in there.
And the last, but certainly not least, and I'm going to ask Mr. Bartels to help back me up on this one here. As we all talk about space in a Riverside, you know, we do have the smallest number of students, but it would be nice to add an additional classroom, which would be used for... In a multifaceted way, I'll kind of start by saying that right now, we do have music and art downstairs as a combo platter, as well as orchestra. That's where rehearsals take place. We're kind of crashing into each other whenever we have assemblies or any type of workshops or anything taking place. It's difficult to maneuver because all of the space is filled. Our hallways are getting filled up as well with recess equipment, with music stands. Our gym is also the cafeteria, which is also the auditorium, which stands alone. So when things need to take place, for example, like an assembly that does impact physical education, it can impact lunch, so maneuvers need to be made. One thing that really is starting to... Well, starting to get to me is seeing all of the cafeteria tables in the hallway. Again, just like the risers that are in the hallway at Riverside, the recess equipment that's in the hallways at Riverside, the buffers and other items, cafeteria tables in the hallway, I mean, outside of being a fire hazard against code, I would think. It's most certainly a safety hazard. It also impacts our ability to lock down the building properly. The gym doors, they're double doors, and there's supposed to be a locking mechanism pole in the middle of it, which had to ultimately be removed so that the tables could fit through that entrance to give it that extra height. So the doors are being held open with wire. I think about, God forbid, emergency, locking the building down. That's kind of an obstacle. So when Mr. Bartels and I were kind of talking about this, that extra classroom could also be used as a way to add an additional space to store the cafeteria tables based on the location of it, at the end of the new wing, which is also kind of connected to the gym, so it would be utilized in a number of different ways. And that is all I have to say about that.
Just to clarify for people looking at home, we're not looking for a 12-classroom addition. We're looking for a 12th.
12th, yes.
What did I say?
No, it just says 12 classes. Maybe laugh.
The way I wrote it.
Because it looks like you want an entire new building.
I'd like 12 more classrooms, please, and a rooftop pool. That's how I usually start my conversations.
That is correct.
But classroom number 12, it would be the 12th classroom, yes. I apologize.
This has come up from time to time in the past about adding that 12th classroom, so that the building would be balanced, should they ever end up with two sections in every single grade level. But this year, we've talked about even other issues, like getting art and music out of one poor space in the basement into a better space upstairs, in addition to the storage issues with the lunch tables. So in addition to putting a classroom, since where we would put it would be right off the gym, you could combine it with a storage closet to get those lunch tables in there and to provide some additional phys ed storage, which I know Carol's looking for as well.
And just a positive thing, I know, walking around, it was they, Eric had put bulletin boards around the school, so those were all just put up, which looked really nice in the new paint. So I definitely seen a lot of nice changes there as well.
Thank you. I think I did leave one thing out. The- Thank you for bringing that up again, and for the compliment. I do appreciate that. With the new bulletin boards, again, thanks to Mrs. Scalisi and the crew for getting that all up. And there was work done over the summer. When I moved in, so to speak, we painted like a quarter of the building. I'd like the rest of the building to be painted in that same color scheme, to, you know, make Riverside a little bit more vibrant and bring that color pattern throughout the buildings. We were talking about professional painters coming in perhaps to finish the job from top to bottom, so that would be-
Would that be our professional high school painter?
That I do not, that I do not know. I mean, my father has offered himself, but it's a dangerous thing to allow him into the building. Just kidding.
We have a wonderful set of high school painters.
Yes, yes, we do. I think Eric's looking for the professional painters, professional, professional.
But I'll take what I can get, most certainly.
If he's looking at, you know, a large project like that, we may need to go with professional painters, but that's going to get to be a very expensive thing. We'll, we'll talk to Eric and see exactly what we need to do, and if we can get it done with some of our staff, or if we need to do combination or, we need to do that.
Who painted the other half of the building? Our professionals?
Our, our staff.
Our high schools?
Our high school staff.
Our high school staff, thank you.
Mr. Scalisi and Mr. Bartels, the, the problem with the heat, is that tied into our problem with our dual-control system in the school district? Or is it separate?
It's only separate, yeah. Right now, we're having some pneumatic issues, as well as thermostat problems that need to be addressed.
Has nothing to do, because I didn't, I, we didn't bring it up at Hewitt, but they have the problem on one of the floors, has totally no automated control that doesn't work on the, on one floor, second floor?
I believe it's, it's the third floor.
And we, I know that we have talked at the walkthroughs about doing something about this. Is that something we need to do in a bond, Mr. Bartels, or overall, the district?
The overall would have to be in a bond. It's a very, it would be extremely a large project.
I hope we consider it, because all the money we're putting into patching the two different systems doesn't seem like it's doing us much good.
Yeah, I've already asked the architects to begin looking into it, to try to come to some resolution on one single system for all of our buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is Pascharella. So Mrs. Hackett and I walked around Watson and looked at some of the proposed budget items that we put in. I'll just highlight some of the, the top priorities that we had, starting with the gym wall padding. A lot of the pads in the walls that sort of line the gym are falling off, they are ripping, creates obviously a safety hazard for the students. Our kitchen cabinets and countertops are absolutely falling apart. Doors are held together with rubber bands, some of the cabinets are loose on the walls, there are holes in them, chips on the, on the countertops that, you know, catch you when you walk by. So that's in, in pretty large need of repair. The other thing that I think is a major priority is the floor in the boys' bathroom. We only have one boys' bathroom in the building, and the floor is sort of concave and pulls water. So every time the kids wash their hands, inevitably, water winds up on the floor, and then it turns into a flood, and there's three kindergartners coming down on the daily to report it. So it creates a hazard, obviously, with the kids running in and out, and, you know, the possibility of slipping. Those are really the priorities that we have in the building. Tara, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Robert, how come the kitchen doesn't have a designation?
Doesn't have a what?
It doesn't have an X.
Is it a bond? Is it a capital?
I mean, it shouldn't be a bond. It should be a more immediate thing.
Transfer capital.
Okay. The other thing was just going, starting with the kitchen, the, kind of the door thing that separates the kitchen from the outside area, that Covert also has that door. John was there with us as well. It's, we're told that if there's a power failure, it comes down, the door comes down. And we had done something at Covert to make sure that that wouldn't come down. And I think we need to make sure that the same thing is at Watson, because that's such a hazard for little hands and fingers, and you could never predict when that's going to happen. So can we give another look at that?
Is that the same situation?
Yeah, if we can do whatever we did at Covert, because it, it worked, right? We figured it out, and it needs to be done at Watson as well. I think Jen is being polite, but the, the main office and principal's office need some work as well. The main office furniture is in terrible, terrible condition. The women are working with file cabinets full of stuff, I don't even know from when, that don't even open.
Those have to come down over there.
Yeah. It doesn't, it really does, it needs some work, it really does. I, I looked at that as a priority as well, when we kind of made our priority list. Some of the other things were easy, like the lighting, I think, could be done truthfully sooner than later. We had that one hallway was like darker than the newer hallway. Yeah, so the, all the classrooms, apparently, last year were changed over to LED lighting. It makes a tremendous difference. The hallways in the building, barring the new wing, which is very well-lit with a lot of windows along the walls, but in the hallways, there are not a lot of, actually, that main hallway there is no lighting whatsoever, except for the ceiling lights. So the LED lights, obviously, project a better overall, you know, ambiance in the hallway. So the hallway, when you walk through the, the front doors to the left, and the one straight ahead, are quite dim.
Are there fixtures there, or no?
There are.
Such as three?
But there is absolutely, it's just the doors, there's no natural light at all.
Right, right, yeah. Well, it's because it's-
Correct, as opposed to the new wing, which has, you know, two whole sections, and just again, the two doors that exit out, so there's just a lot more natural lighting. So the camera and buzzer for Project Rate is marked as the Smart Schools. Do we expect that to be done, or soon?
We would include that with a Smart Schools project, as we did the last time around. We ended up working on some projects before the-
The money came in.
That piece got approved, right? So we would do that with this as well.
Because I would imagine that's also probably a- So currently, there is a, like a peephole, and there is a buzzer on the outside to alert the staff that, that they are there to pick up. But the only way for them to know who's there is to get up and walk out the peep door. And for some of us, without prejudice, the peephole, as well as some of the doors, is relatively high.
That's why they sent me to Watson.
That's right. I mean, just saying.
Do we buy a stool?
I need more than a stool. But, but the, the problem is, is with no cameras there, they're going, and oftentimes, they are just opening the door, because, you know, they're pretty routine in who's coming in and who's coming out. You know, we have cameras all over the building, there is a camera outside the door, there's just nowhere to view it for the Project Rate staff. You can view it in the office, you can view it in the security, but there's nobody manning those, those places during Project Rate hours in the afternoon.
I thought we talked about this before.
Yeah, we did.
And we said that we could view it on an iPad. Am I making this up?
No, we did talk about this a while ago. It was like two years ago.
You were missing, Robert. It was the last meeting, I think.
No, no. Right, we talked about viewing this on an iPad and having Project Rate have access to an iPad, so that if somebody-
That was at Hewitt, right?
No.
No.
It was at Watson.
At Watson. Because it was before we had the peephole.
The very high peephole.
Robbie, Robbie, can, can we put a new door in the back with a window, and that would solve the visual problems?
So just to be clear, too, the other issue is, I don't know if you know, so it's, the gym is where Project Rate 95% of the time is. And then the door is almost set back, it's probably about a good five, six feet between the edge of the gym, where everybody is, and where the door is. So, you know, at night, I don't know that there would be such a good vantage point.
Well, if you put a light outside, I'm just, and just reviewing, that's the issue at Hewitt also, that the door is across the gym, but to put a phone or, or a monitor in the gym is problematic, because we, our gyms are used by the public.
But we do have cameras on our iPads, administrators that you have access to the cameras on it, so that sounds like an easy solution, and probably one that can be done immediately.
Quicker than the, than the safety smart, smart schools, because that's going to-
Okay, so I'll, I'll email tomorrow and try to get that underway, and get an iPad for them. Sure.
And there's a camera outside that door currently?
There is, yes.
Okay. Lighting also?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, we-
It's a dingy-
It is. There's good lighting up.
There is. To make it as safe as possible. So, yeah, Robert, if we could add the main office slash principal's office-
Yes, I already have it.
And just the last piece to mention, the curb repair on North Village, that is in there, because that is a drop-off in the morning for students, so the cars pull up.
Oh, it's all.
And it is, it's, the curb is chipped away at, and part of the sidewalk is, is collapsed. John, I believe you went over to take a look at that recently?
Yes. Yes, I did.
Good punching.
I, I had also spoke to the Village about the curbing, because I didn't know if that's our responsibility or the Village.
That's a county road.
It's a county road, so we'd have to deal with Nassau County and-
And isn't the, the curb is, is trash, because people drive on it.
That's correct.
And park on it.
Yes.
So, much like at Covert, we're going to have problems if we, we do it, it's just going to happen.
According to my custodian, it has been repaired over time, and it's, yeah, to no fault, exactly. Can I answer Watson? That's it. Thanks for having me.
Wait, so before we move on from Watson, turf field, that would be a priority for me. We are four middle school soccer teams in the fall, and our four middle school lacrosse teams in the spring use that field every day for, for an hour and a half practice. That field is used pretty much seven days a week with RBC soccer, and I think a little bit of RBC lacrosse. So that would be huge if that could be turfed over. And in addition to phys ed and recess, but it's a heavily-used field in a very field-poor town.
That would benefit two schools.
Correct, that would benefit middle school and Wilson, Watson.
Thank you. Ms. Dionne came to visit me at Wilson, and we, we walked around the building, and the first thing that, you know, we both saw was that Wilson is in need of an expansion. The building was not really meant to house as many students as we have. In 2015, Wilson had 380 students, I'm projecting 440 next year, and that's put a large strain on the building. So I do think that, at some point, we're going to need to expand. Art is in, we have a portable system, which is old and in need, you know, has been around, I believe, since the 1960s. It was supposed to be temporary, it's been here this whole time. And we do need that space, but I would like to see an expansion and have an art room and a music room. And we are dangerously close in some areas of splitting in my current kindergarten or my current fourth grade. And another issue that we have is that the gym is extremely small. I can only have one class in the gym at a time, which means that we can't have lunch in the gym like the other, we're the only school that has lunch in the classrooms. And we, we're, we're really short on space. So I do believe that we need an expansion at, at Wilson School. On top of that, projects that I'm looking for, for this year, I'm asking for a small storage shed, a shed that could go outside by the playground where we can keep recess equipment. A major reason for that is because we have a lot of recess equipment that's in the hallways, there's a lot of instruction in the hallways, but I'd like to clear some of that out, put a small shed in right by the playground where I could put sports equipment, the kids can all share the balls and all the other equipment that goes there. I'd like to put that in. I think the deck by the portables need some repair. There's some, some spots that are rotting a little bit, and we, I'd like the deck to be painted over the summer if we can, and that can be by the high school workers. A major project, though, is, professional painters. The gym wall padding needs to be replaced there, by the entrance, it's being held together by tape right now, and also, the bottom is fraying, so the, the padding in the gym needs to be redone. And I also think that it should be a little higher than it is, against the walls on the brick, there must have been things screwed into it over the years that are no longer there, so aesthetically, it doesn't look very nice. I think that if we did replace the padding and raise the padding another two feet, it would make the building look much nicer, but the padding needs to be replaced anyway. I'm asking for a new water fountain on the second floor. I have four, four water fountains, three of them are newer and have the waterbottle filters. One of them is older and has warm water, and the kids don't really use it so much. So if I had one more, that would complete all the water fountains that I have in the building. I'm asking, and we've been asking for a while, our, our school doors, the hallways look beautiful, but the doors have a lot of scratching and a lot of marking on them, and I was asking a little bit at a time if we could take some of those doors and sand them and finish them over the summer, even if that project went on for several years. We would target the doors that are the most beat up, have them removed from the wall, sanded down, restained and put back. I think that's something that we could probably do, too. And the last major piece on here is I was asking for a hanging projector and audio system in the auditorium. Right now, the audio system doesn't work, the sound system doesn't work so well. We've had problems when we have talent show and other assemblies, we either get a real lot of static and a real lot of feedback, or it isn't very reliable. And we have a beautiful white screen in the auditorium, but it, we have to pull out a projector on wheels that moves, and I'd love to just have one that's hanging in the auditorium permanently that's easy to use.
Is Wilson hosting the summer playground again this year?
The rec center comes, comes in to Wilson and generally uses the entire first floor and the playground, and sometimes the portables also, so yes.
I, I see on this list, we have Blacktop repair under, under bond. I don't know if that was that small Blacktop.
There's some small area that I think can be repaired and not need a bond for, but there was, there's some areas that might need, that if we're having, replacing the playground, that I think would be a nice opportunity to repair some areas that are out there. There's a small walkway that goes from the playground to the basketball court, and I'd like for that to be expanded a little bit. We have what we call Blacktop-only recess, so if the grass is wet, the kids can still go out and play on the Blacktop and the basketball court, but that is really only single-file students can go on that path. I'd like to expand that a little bit, and if we, we could do work, that shouldn't be such a huge job.
Okay.
Do you want to turf?
I would also like a turf field on the south side, it is on the list, but I think really, the south side, the south field does have drainage issues, but I think we would decide if we were going to do a building expansion first, and if that would impede onto the field before we would-
South field has had drainage issues.
It has. I believe that there's concrete under there, and for whatever reason, it's never-
It was never done running.
Right. So it could be a better utilized field.
It was stupid.
Oh, okay. That's right. So we don't use that field as often as we can because of the drainage issues there.
Liz, anything else?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy.
Thank you.
So Kelly Barry and I walked around my building and said, if we're talking about our wish list, which is what I kind of feel like in certain ways we're doing right now, I wish that the building would stop leaking. That's what I would wish. I wish that the cafeteria windows would get replaced. I wish the things that are in this prior list actually got done, because my understanding is some of it, meant much of it, was already put in for the budget for last year. So, and it's March. So there are things like the exhaust fans in the faculty bathrooms, exhaust fans in the locker rooms, we really need them. We have some, but they're not hooked up to anything. And I know, John, when you walked around with Ms. Barry and myself, you talked about using the mechanical something that we switch on, but that's broken and not fixable, apparently. So we need to get what needs to be done.
Wait, I'm sorry, the, the big mechanical thing that was broken, I thought we talked about, that was getting a piece that we were going to fix it.
That was a damper something.
Yeah, that.
It wasn't, that's different.
Okay, sorry.
That's, and I don't really know, so the middle school has a lot of scary basements. So in one scary basement, there's the one with the damper thing, and the others, no, the alligator's gone. In the other scary basement, there's the one with the big boiler. Then there's another scary basement I no longer go down into, but, so that's, I believe it's two separate things. But we do have, like, in a faculty bathroom, we have an exhaust fan sitting there, but there's nowhere, it has to be put out.
But it doesn't exhaust anything?
It doesn't exhaust anything.
It runs, but stays in the room?
No, no, it doesn't run.
Wait, it does not run?
Oh, it doesn't run?
No.
It doesn't run.
Locker rooms.
It's fake. So it looks, it's fake, but they all have to be vented outside. They're not supposed to run into the ceiling. I'm just, I don't know much, but I know that much.
They're running into the drop ceiling.
They're not running at all, but...
Well, no, no.
No, we said, we would just put it in the...
But if we turned it on, it would run into the drop ceiling.
Correct.
And this is, and the locker rooms, middle school children, smell. Thank you, Ms. Pascarella just said it. She says she doesn't miss the smell. So in the locker rooms, we, so some of those, so again, I'm not gonna take up a lot of time, but the things that we really prioritize are, I know that we tried to do something with the roof on the, the eastern side of the building by the tennis court, but it didn't work. We're still leaking. And then we talked last year about putting in all this money to replace all the bricks. I don't know if we need to talk about that again. It's a lot of money. There's also cracks in the building, like it says in here by room 108. There's, you know, in the front, there's a big stone structure. There's a crack coming down at the, we looked at that, if you remember?
Yes.
By the parking lot, the, the wall is bowing out. Other...
Just to update you on that, we, we are in the middle of that. The designs have been finished and have been submitted to the state by the architect. We are planning on doing that work this summer.
Good.
So we just need to get it approved by the state. We will get it bid out as soon as we get that approval. We've gone for a third-party review, which should speed up that process. So we should be able to get it approved hopefully within a month or so and then get it out on the street and get a, get a bid in here for that work to get done at some point this summer.
That would be wonderful.
What work is that?
It's the work that's at the room 108.
No, well, what is it? What are we doing? Are we ripping the brick out or what are we doing there?
It's, it's a lot of brick work around the outside of the building, interior on the courtyards. It's a lot of repointing. They're, they're taking some of the brick out. You'd have to have the architect actually come in to explain that, but some of the brick is coming out. A lot of it is being repointed. They're doing crack repairs.
We talked about it pretty in-depth last year, but I didn't think we were gonna jump into anything because they, the architect said he couldn't guarantee that that would be the solution. Like we did the, whatever, the parapet wall, right? And that didn't work.
Right.
So now what makes us assume that this'll, this'll work? Because they told us last year, they, they don't know. So we're, we're in the process of investing a lot of money in something that may or may not...
There are pieces going on. So we have, one of the things which is supposed to happen over the break, which it didn't, is some exploratory investigation over whether lintels have to be replaced around windows. So that is in the process. That didn't happen over the break. I'm waiting for a date on when that's gonna happen. It should happen fairly soon. We don't have to wait for another break for that to happen. It's exterior work. Could happen after hours. But the plans from the state, from the architect are to redo all these pieces. Some of this exploratory work will play into that depending on what they find.
It's the same architect told us what to do when we were out for bond last time, repair that wall. We spent significant amount of money repairing it and it still leaks. So I, I don't know why we would step into the same exact type of what they, what they told us to do last time, which was not effective for us.
John, can I just jump in here?
Sure.
You know, I, we, we had to replace the parapet across the top. Whether, whether it was gonna be the solution to this problem or not, that needed to be replaced. So we were comfortable with allowing that to occur even though we knew it was only had a partial chance of in fact solving the problem. Just like the back wall, I don't see us ever being able to fix this thing until that wall is replaced. I, I, I don't know. We've repointed it before.
Right. That's not too long ago, so it's not something that's...
Yes, that is correct. I don't remember the exact year in which it was, which of the bond issues it was included, but quite frankly, you know, we had talked about the replacement of that wall. I don't know how we're ever gonna stop the leakage along. Remember, it's, it's just not one spot. There are about four or five different locations where it's leaking.
Correct.
To me, it's not, it's not the window sills, it's not the parapet. It is the wall. And I think until, whether it's the bricks or the mortar or whatever, I think that it really needs to be much more extensive. We know what it did in the back. We were able to get it done. It sealed the back of the building and I think that's quite frankly, the only solution that we're ever gonna be able to rely upon if in fact that solution...
And is that what is up at the state waiting for approval now to actually replace that wall?
I don't believe it's to replace the entire wall.
Oh, okay.
I'd need to bring, we need to bring the architect in and have a discussion with him about exactly what...
Because when, when we talked to them last time about it, they didn't know. They said, yeah, it would, we could try it, but they...
No, they do not know.
They wouldn't, they couldn't guarantee that it would work because we repointed it less, what, five years ago, four years ago?
You are absolutely correct. If they come in and tell us it's gonna be repointed, there's gonna be no guarantee that that will work. And there is a possibility that that brick is porous at this point.
Maybe we need to...
It goes beyond the mortar.
Ask somebody else to come in and give us opinions rather than having the same...
We did. We have a mason expert coming in.
Right.
And what, and what did they say?
They haven't been here yet.
Well, they haven't done the interior work.
The architect is bringing...
I don't know. We've talked to this company for years and years and to spend more money for not a guarantee or at least a 95% sure it's gonna work, it just doesn't seem like it's...
Sheila, how many years has it been now?
This is my 17th year as principal. This is my 17th year as principal.
It's been a problem every year.
And two years assistant principal, so 19, that I know of. But it is, but it is getting, honestly, with all kidding aside, it does, it, sometimes it's really bad depending on the way the rain is coming in. You know what I mean? And that's the same thing on the courtyard that's over by, the courtyard that's on the western side. You know, that's the same thing. So we, we did all that work in the auditorium and everything and then we've replaced like what we had to do because of that kind of leakage stuff. Other things that are on the list, there are some things, again, that, you know, we would like two, we would like two turf fields and we would like the tennis court to be, it's got a big old crack through it. I don't think that's on here, but I just thought of it, so I thought I'd throw it in. Because it's a wish list, so here we go. There were certain things on here that we had discussed. I think the locker rooms, replacing the boys' locker room. I don't think that those are things that are necessary. I'm afraid if we replace, like it says, replace lockers in boys' locker room, right? Kelly, we went in and looked at it.
It wasn't...
It's not like something that I would say, oh, we need to do this.
Not a priority.
Not a priority. And then also the lockers in general, I'm afraid to pull them off the walls because I think the walls are gonna come down. So I think we just need to clean them well. And, and Mark has been great at fixing them as they break, but that would be something that's like a big endeavor. Our classroom doors, we have a lot of classroom doors that are very big and very heavy and the doorknobs that we put on them also keep breaking. Like they keep breaking the doors, the doors keep breaking or the doorknob breaks. So there's quite a few that if we could maybe do over time in replacing those door. We have to do, if Rise is coming to the middle school, not next year, but the year after, then there's work that really needs to be done this summer so that we're not in a bind because that scares me for the next year.
You're coming.
You're coming. So there's a, there's a bathroom that's between the stage and room 121 and that bathroom needs to be really turned into a children's bathroom. Like right now, it's a sort of, well, the core classroom uses it, but it needs to be renovated. There's a urinal and a toilet. There needs to be more and made it user-friendly for the kids. There are also, we were talking about a way to kind of extend room 121 also or use the hallway that's back there off the stage because we're also gonna need a room that's a sensory type room for the students as well. So those kinds of renovations, those really need to happen this summer when we can as opposed to, you know...
Marshing next summer.
Yeah, and then all of a sudden, the kids are on the doorstep and that would really be a bad thing.
And Rise is a, is a longer program than the regular school year, so you have to take that into consideration as well.
The Rise children have a longer program than our regular school year, so that has to be taken into consideration as well.
I'm not, I'm not entirely sure that at age they'll be going through the summer here. That's, remains to be seen. Definitely for the elementary years, that was true, Liz, but for the middle school years, that may, that may not be true.
Okay. And then there's the floor in room 10 was replaced, but it has to be re-replaced because it's got its buckling points in it. And I know they've been told about it. I know, I believe John's been in contact with them, but that is something that was done, has been, needs to be redone. And then the things like where the replaced floor in the girls' coaches' office, it's just starting, like it's old and it's starting to come up. Like I'm sort of jumping in this because every single thing here needs to be done and I don't know which one you're gonna say yes to. So the things that I know, like for example, part of the ceiling is falling for two years in the auditorium.
Yes.
We have a piece of plywood over it and another piece fell off. So like I know we're not allowed to talk about the asbestos word, but that's the reason the lobby in the, in the, we also need to redo some stuff for the lobby, the lobby itself, you know, the front hall. But again, that ceiling, it's a big deal. So if we could just do all of those at once, just tent it once, call it a day, and take care of those. But I think that's also with some of these floors there are the problems with. And then the other piece is that there's, again, with, unless you wanna do the athletics carol, but the back, the backboards in the main gym and the PE closets and ceilings in the main and auxiliary gym. And in both gyms, the floors have been, my mother would say, sanded to a fare thee well. So now you can't sand them anymore. So that's why they need to be replaced. You're starting to go through the floor when they're stripping or sanding. So that's why, that's on there as well.
There was buckling in the main gym. Did you figure out that, what that was from?
I had the, I had the floor company in there to take a look at it. They were sending one of their gym floor experts to come and take a look at it.
So waiting on a response?
Yes.
And there are things like replace the front stoop.
Right.
It seems as though that that front stoop in all of my time there, you know, we replaced it and we fixed it, it was pretty sleek. Like, so where the choice is to do what we did on the side, which was then we just laid cement, now we don't have any problems over there. But then it's not as pretty. So it's gonna, we can fix it, it's going to break again.
Yes.
You know, like it's, and it breaks every couple of years. It doesn't...
Concrete.
It, it doesn't sustain any length of time because you have 1,000 people walking over them on a daily basis, you know, a couple times. So I don't know, is that something we prioritize? You know, I'd rather the leaks go away, the air conditioners work and we get new lights and the ceiling gets fixed.
And the lobby?
In the lobby. In the lobby and the auditorium.
Just a couple of things to add.
Okay.
The window in the auditorium, that one area off stage, did you wanna talk about that?
Yes, the, so that's part of the leakage problem.
Yeah.
So the two, on either side of the stage, you have steps that go into the back. One heads towards the bathroom that we're gonna be renovating and the other heads towards the special ed office. And on both sides of those walls from the leakage, we've, like on the one side, we replaced the window, has new trim around it. They did, redid all of the plasterboard, whatever that's called, and redid the whole thing, but the leaks are coming back. It's gonna have to be redone again. The other side, that same thing needs to happen to the other side of it. I mean, I know it's something that we can do in-house. I don't think it's a major money ticket.
It's something we can immediately address.
But I think it needs to be addressed and when, you know, when you're having, and just to say, it is a beautiful auditorium because when it was redone, it really, it's great, except for that ceiling. And the chandelier got fixed, so that was a good thing too. But when, you know, those doors are open and you're walking through, it's not, like one side literally smelled and had to be fixed. We need to fix the other side too. And what else am I forgetting?
The carpet in the main office.
The carpet in the main office. But see, those are the things that like, I feel like...
It says prior, but...
It says prior, but it's still, like I don't know when that's happening. It was prior because it was in last year's budget. So can it just be done now? You know?
I think that's, that's gonna be another abatement issue, right?
Yes.
The carpet?
Another what issue?
Blue.
No, but we've had carpet tiles in the main office.
It's been not.
That's, that was replaced about 10 years ago.
Right.
That was carpet tiles.
Right.
I believe it's carpet tiles in the main office of Southside Middle School. I don't think it's the old school carpeting.
It doesn't...
Right? Isn't it carpet tiles? Yeah. Because my office was also done. My office is fine, not asking for anything in there. It's a beautiful office, but the main office, and that again, is wear and tear and dirt. And let me just go to this one and then I'll stop because we're all tired, I promise. Also, speaking of the leaks, there's the closet in the main office that when they had to replace something in there, but that's also a hot leaky mess.
Yes. The sprinklers...
And that was technical, in case anyone is wondering. It's a hot leaky mess.
The sprinkler system?
And then the sprinkler system, that's not even on this.
I know, that's why I'm...
But it was in last year's budget that we were getting a sprinkler system for the courtyards and we don't have one. We have sprinklers on sticks, which I'm not really okay. It's not as attractive as you want and the Girl Scout troops are redoing that eastern courtyard right now, but there was supposed to be something with a sprinkler system, but we don't have that.
Cafeteria, I'm sorry.
They can be done over like a long weekend or a holiday?
And the cafeteria windows.
It can, but it's...
If Mr. O'Shea comes to the cafeteria on the next board meeting and the cafeteria windows look the same, I'm not taking responsibility.
It's been years, dude.
And then I have replaced the fire alarm panel, but it says repair here.
I'm not sure where that is right now. Do you know or do you know the fire alarm panel?
Yeah, the fire alarm panel has been replaced.
It has been replaced?
It has been, there's a new panel in there.
So we can take that off this?
Yes.
Okay.
And the shower in the boys' locker room?
The shower, what I did find out from the shower in the boys' locker room, there's one in the, not the boys' locker room, in the boys' athletic office.
The office, okay.
It has something to do with the amount of plumbing and piping and what's happening in there is why it hasn't been fixed.
Okay.
Correct.
And then the AC for the tech lab is there, but I also have AC for room 122.
Um, the tech lab, the AC was again in, there was a money put aside for that tech room, that new tech lab. So Robert and I have talked about it, that, that can, AC should be able to go up coming out of that budget line of which there's still money in currently this year. So that needs to go up, hopefully before it gets hot. And there have been, um, the room 122, it, there have been, um, air conditioners put up. They're not all fully functioning yet. Many are, but there's one in the library that has like pieces of paper under it. So that just says to me that it's not fully done. And one, the other one in the library is wrapped in plastic. And then there's others that, but they're mostly getting done. Like I know it's in process. I do, um, because I've seen some progress in that. But there are some that it's, yeah, yeah.
And then the hot water heater repair?
Yeah, did that get done? The hot water heater, the second hot water heater? That was the piece that had a switch that had to be fixed.
Yes, the hot water issues were addressed during the last break.
Okay. Okay.
And then my last piece.
You can keep going. I was trying to be like nice and make it short and, but this, you keep it on, I'm good.
Um, there were new chairs for the faculty room, classroom chairs. Does that come out of instruction?
That comes out of chairs, out of John's budget.
It would be facilities budget.
Facilities budget for the faculty room and for.
I don't see any of them listed here on this list.
No, it was listed on our original list. So I don't know where they are.
Those in the regular budget?
Yes, those are in the regular budget.
All right.
That's in the regular budget.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Wait, before we move on, in terms of athletics and phys ed, I have, um, two priorities and then obviously the turf field would be my wish list. The one priority is the protective netting that, for lacrosse and track, that goes around the curves of both sides of the main field. Again, land poor, we have lacrosse practices, often two teams with 190 track kids running around the outside. It would be extremely beneficial and safe if we had the netting like we have at the high school, um, on the curves. So this way, when the kids are shooting at the goal and they miss, it goes into the net and not, dog.
Is that, is that permanent, that netting? Just my question.
It's, it would go up for the spring sports.
It goes up for the season?
Yes.
And then it comes on?
And then comes down. Yeah, the same thing we do at the high school. We don't need it for the fall. Soccer ball, you can see coming, lacrosse ball, not so much.
Why just on the curves, Carol? We have it all the way around the track at the high school.
We, uh.
For all of course.
We don't really need it around the whole track at the, at the middle school.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a slower, it's a slower game, so you really, you really, you know, hopefully you're not shooting sideways. And then my, my second thing are the, um, the very few closets we have in the gym are stuffed with gymnastics equipment and wrestling mats. The, they are disgusting, the closets. The ceilings are falling down, chunks of cement are falling down. And because the mats are so high, it's, it's kind of sometimes they knock into it. So that really should be done, in my opinion, sooner rather than later. And then of course, the turf on the main field would be very helpful because that's also, well, both fields, but honestly, if I had, if I had to pick, we need the main field. Because that's, we have, you know, seven teams using one field. So, that's all I got.
Thank you, anything else for the middle school?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, we promised next year you're going first and we'll do reversal.
I think we said that.
That's what they say every year.
Number one.
Heard that before. Yeah. Memories of the last bond. So I'll go out of order as well and do my non-athletic list first and then get help from Carol. So first, in no order of importance, the, the network server is presently located in the basement and needs to be moved upstairs. Number one, to be in proximity to the technology office. Number two, for climate control and temperature and humidity issues. There's a closet that Dr. Zouar and I looked at in the music wing that, that would facilitate that. The nurse's office needs to be reconfigured in that there, yes?
Can I interrupt you? I thought, I thought that closet wasn't big enough. Why did I think I saw on a report that that closet wasn't big enough to move the server to? Who, who did the high school?
I did.
What, didn't, did you write a note that it wasn't big enough?
That was, we mentioned it during our, our.
They asked me if it was big enough.
But we didn't measure it out. That was done months before.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
No, I had Mike Anderson check it out.
Yep. I think there were, I think the question was raised when we were there was, is the closet big enough?
Right.
And I think that was answered. Yep, I think we're fine.
Okay.
Brian, would it take a lot away from the music room? Or it's not a music room itself?
No, the, well, it's, it's a store, right now it's used for storage.
Okay, so it's.
And the, the room that's actually contiguous to the tech office is an instructional space. It's a classroom. So I would rather see a closet, storage closet disappear than a classroom.
Right, okay.
So it's a storage closet.
So the nurse's office needs to be reconfigured. There are two rooms adjacent to it and it's presently used for speech and occupational therapy. Those occupational therapy classes would be moved up closer to the core classroom because 80% of those lessons do occur with our core students. That office would then be extended to extend the needs for, um, the nurse office because of the increased need in recent events. There's two nurses there almost, most of the time. We're at, we're at the edge of, uh, of physical plant restrictions and that whole section hasn't been renovated in almost 25 years. There's a lot, a few small things. The door needs to be added between the core classroom and the classroom next to it. As the core instruction and program has evolved, there's greater need to use the classroom that used to be just adjacent to it, but in terms of splitting the students up into small group instruction, that class is used almost all the time. A door adjacent to it would increase ease of access and make more fluid use of it during instruction times, especially during small group instructions for reading during the beginning of the day. There's a med, there's, there's a couple of doors that we need, a meditative space in the library that was furnished through a grant from last year that is in a closed space. Would like to partition that off to give it a little bit more quiet space so that there's no disturbance from the outside library. That would be minimal. The two air conditioning mentions are for very small spaces. One's a very small instructional space. And the other is to take pity on the custodial staff who are the only ones who don't have a climate controlled space when they're on a break. Yeah. So the, uh, the bathrooms adjacent to the auditorium are from four renovations ago and they're, they're embarrassing. And not the least of which, it's, that's the bathrooms that our visitors use or when people come in to see a show. Not only, not only compliant, they're, they're cutting edge 18th century stuff. So, um, that. I probably, yeah, Mr. Garfinkel probably used them, yeah.
Original beautiful pink.
So. So the recommendation is to, um, bring that up to snuff as well as the attendance office, which was Mr. Garfinkel's office, um, which has gone through three iterations, which is a hodgepodge of different thrown together pieces and puzzles. The whole room needs a facelift. For a lot of people, that's their first introduction into the high school. So, um, that's important. It's also been discussed, I didn't talk about this with Ms. Hackett, but it came about, I talked to Mr. O'Shea earlier in the year, the need to make the, the campus entrance with the pillars more permanent. We've gone through several iterations of that, none of which seem to have any staying power. So the thought was to put in a more established slash concrete structure that introduces the building outside.
Yeah, I've, I've asked the architect to look into that. In combination with the high school, we also need to look at a different entrance for the administration building for special education office. And I've asked the architect to kind of look at that entire entrance. We keep talking about little pieces, um, you know, whether it's the guard booth, whether it's pillars. I asked them to look at kind of just designing something so that as you enter campus, everything looks nice. The security guard booths, the pillars, the, uh, the entrance to the administration building. Right now it's, you know.
Hodgepodge.
It's really hodgepodge.
Did, did we work out there? Did we do this new signage? Someone took down a section of the fence and put new signs up out there? Is that the village or us? As you come into, as you come into the school, there's new signs, the piece of chain link fence that went across the road is gone, across the, you know, stuck out into the road.
No, we didn't.
So the village must have come in.
The piece of chain link fence that was taken down a while ago.
That was a while ago.
Talking about putting in the, uh, the sign.
Was it?
Yeah.
But there's new signage out.
The village, the village came today and replaced the signs.
Okay.
So, so if we have a Mason out there looking, I sure would, I know this isn't on the list, I'm sorry, I sure would appreciate if they could look at the steps leading to the side entrance and see if it could be more wheelchair compliant. What, if anything, could be done to do, for that?
Outside entrance. Which entrance is that?
Which entrance?
By the flag pole.
The one facing the administration building?
Yeah. By the flag pole. The main entrance, I call that, and the south entrance? Yeah.
The other thing was the heat in the faculty room was a real problem, but why is that marked for something for next year? That looks like something that can be done now.
Yeah, that's a question of climate control. I don't think that's a renovation.
No, right. And it was, it was boiling hot in there.
Correct.
If we could just take a look at that, that doesn't need to wait.
Okay.
And I'm gonna segue to boiling hot. The, both phys ed, um, coaches offices in the high school and the downstairs locker room are in dire need of ventilation. Downstairs smells like a swamp and, and there's just no air down there. And the phys ed offices are about 90 degrees. And there's no, right now, we took out two tiles just to get some air flowing, but that should, you know, be done sooner rather than later. We, I would say bond wise, uh, the toilet, shower stall reconfiguration in both the boys and the girls locker rooms to accommodate, um, neutral sites. Put doors on the, right now, we just have one big kind of horseshoe walk-through shower so we can take that space and make individual stalls with doors. Just a thought. Air conditioning in the main gym and the aux gym. We use both locations, not only for phys ed, but for, um, testing and for, for CS banquet where we all melt. The padding on the gym walls, again, we have some now, but if we, uh, we can do it right now, it's all in pieces. And I would like what we're going to do, Mr. Duffy's request, but just taller pieces so they stay on. Right now, when the balls knock off, some of the pieces just fall right off the wall. We had, I don't remember when, last December or the December before, um, one of the backboards broke and part of the ceiling, which is the walkway between the high, the main gym and the aux gym, um, literally cracked off. And right now we have a hole in the ceiling. So I would like that repaired eventually. And then. It is very good ventilation, yes. Not in the PE offices though. But, um, what else? Oh, and when we put in these beautiful new, um, lockers that we have in the boys and the girls locker room, uh, we left the tiles from 1922. So they are the powder blue old little tiles in pink and blue. So I would like that kind of updated. And I believe we, we put in the new benches that we needed in the boys locker room because some of them were broken. I'm not sure we replaced the girls ones. So if we're going and we're gonna do the toilet reconfiguration, my, my request would be to take care of the tiles as well and make it look really nice in there. Uh, 100% roof repair because we have leaks on our beautiful new floor. So I would say that's top of the list. In the new, in the gym, yeah, in the main gym. Yeah, so we don't want to have the warping that happened the last time.
Do we have any idea what that's brought from?
Uh, the roof, uh, the roof itself is starting to show its age. We're finding a lot of leaks in the seams. Uh, I do have a quote that I've given to Mr. Bartels to have that, uh, roof re-sealed.
Didn't we cover it with a membrane that was supposed to last five years?
Not the gym.
Not the gym.
Not the gym.
Not that one.
Yeah, not that roof, okay.
Can we, I mean.
We held, when we were doing the roofs, that was one of the thoughts to do that, but at the time, it, it didn't seem necessary. You know, we had the roofer up there and said we could, you know, would hold off a little longer. No.
John, is, is the, is the estimate you got to replace the roof, repair the roof?
It's to put another membrane on top of the existing roof.
Oh, that will give us one.
Similar to what they did on the other parts.
Another five or six years?
The roofer, he said 10, at, at least 10 on it.
Because if the floor gets ruined with leaks this time, I don't think we'll be covered, will we? The insurance companies replaced the floor just this past summer.
Right.
Mr. Murphy, also the ventilation in the main bathroom off of the main office was an issue as well. We talked about that?
Yeah, there, there is no ventilation.
Well, right. Lack of equals big problem.
There's a fan there, I don't know what the purpose is.
Another non-working fan.
That fan actually does work. It's just not strong enough to, I guess.
So how big of a deal is it to get something stronger in there? Since, since there's something existing already, can that, can that be fixed?
Definitely be something that the architects have to look at, you know, like the CFM needs to be, to be what he.
Can we get a strong, can we get a stronger fan?
I was gonna say, really?
I mean, it just feels like it should be, be done. Also, Mr. Murphy, is the scanning system working again properly or is solving problems with it?
The ID system?
Yeah. The one, yeah, coming into the building?
Yep. A plus to give them their credit. When it has broken down, they've been pretty good about coming back and expediting it.
Okay.
Especially in recent times.
And we also talked about that keyboarding room and maybe moving some of the kind of existing structure. You could use it as a testing space, but have you thought about that room at all?
Yeah, so, so there's a room upstairs called, we kept the door from when it was keyboarding, I don't know, 40 years ago. It's now the Tamberg Lab. There was talks of renovating it last year, but lo and behold, it, the real reason that we need it is for an, a testing space for overflow for our testing center. And the biggest expense that would recur for redoing it would be putting study carrels in, which they already have.
Right.
So that any changes to that room would be minimal. We could do it ourselves pretty much and it's eliminating, there's about a 10-foot, I don't know what to call it.
Yeah, it's like, it's like a level, right.
In the front and just removing that to give us a little bit more room to put some more desks in. So I think that's an internal thing. I don't think that's a major construction job.
Anything else, Mr. Murphy?
No, ma'am.
Administration and district office.
Uh, yeah, I mentioned, uh, you know, the, kind of the empty room for the special ed office and fixing that up is part of the overall entrance. In addition, we have some bathroom renovations, the administration building we need to make. And just following up on some other renovations at the maintenance building, we're trying to get some information on getting those fixed appropriately. We've had some issues trying to get, get quotes or getting, uh, some information on exactly how to, how to make some of those repairs. District wide, uh, we have, that's where you see those HVAC controls, that's the overall system, that's where I put that. That would be a bond issue item. We have also have to add additional food prep sinks in all of our elementary schools. This is a new requirement by Department of Health. Not such a big item, but the, the issue with it is finding space for additional sinks in our elementary kitchens. So, uh, we are looking at how to do that now, but we'll, we'll get that figured out and commit to compliance with that for next year.
Thank you. John, anything for?
No, I mean, I, we talked, I talked about the carpeting with, uh, John, but it's a, it's a very big deal. You have to relocate everybody out of the administration building while you're ripping up and.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna continue to look at it and maybe do it in, in pieces. I don't think we do the whole thing in one shot. We'd have to move the entire, uh, you know, my entire office.
Yeah, but it's an, it's an abatement. So would you be able to do that, half the office and, and not?
In, in small stages. You do the abatement while everybody's out, but you just do a small piece. You don't have to move everybody out. So you might be able to do it in stages.
Anything else? Thank you for the principals and the directors for coming.
Thank you.
Gonna open the mic for any questions on the budget. If you come up, please mention your name and your address, please.
Eric Messier, Ward, 93, Rose. I just had a question about the elementary school playgrounds. Being a teacher and a board coach in another district, we want to create some items that have not been in our budget. Our parents have created what we call friends of groups. Does the Ruffel Center Board of Education allow for friends of groups to be formed?
I have to defer to Dr. Johnson on that, I'm not sure.
Friends of track and fields and it's a warrant that a COVID met. Those parents would go out, they would raise money, and then it was given to the board to the Board of Education.
All right, just, just historically, what you need to know is that the original installation
of the playgrounds in the school district were done in partnership between the school district and, and parent groups at each of the buildings. I know that the Uitt was put together by a group of parents and actually constructed by the Parents Act. They came in on a, a weekend or two and actually built the, yeah. So it's been done before. Currently, what we do is we have, particularly in the athletic group, we have a number of people, you want to call them friends of, but they basically are supportive of the various programs that we have in athletics and they do raise a considerable amount of money. So we also have the foundation, the education foundation. So, I mean, there are, there are ample, many number of examples, but we have in the past put together.
So like a hypothetically, form a Friends of Covert School playground, raise money for a playground, give it to the Board of Education or whoever, and that money could then be used to build a school playground. If we wanted to expedite, we, for a possible bond to pass, then money coming through? I just want to know if we have, if we as parents have options to help expedite.
Well, anything that would be donated to the school has to be done as a gift that is receivable by the board. So in advance of doing that, I would think that, I would suggest talking to your colleagues in other schools, find out that, I mean, we always deal with equity issues in the school district to make sure that, that one school does not have the opportunities that others do not, particularly with regard to things like our facilities. So I, I don't see why there would necessarily be a problem, but I would like to see that being a district-wide, I mean, it could be school by school by school, but it's not something that should be a single school.
So we couldn't then, like, if Covert wanted to do their own thing, then might not go to Covert?
Covert always does its own thing. Where is it? I mean, I, you know, look.
We're going to try to endeavor to raise that amount of money.
No, if you want to learn how to ballroom dance, you go to Covert. I mean, that's, yes.
Dr. Johnson, just before an effort like that is made, because I think that they would put, they would be all in on it, shouldn't we have somebody also just talk about liability? Like, do we have to vet that with our lawyers or anything like that?
That's been one of the problems with the PTA and gifting things from the PTA because there have been a number of lawsuits in recent years, even despite the fact that the school district has absolved them of any liability and accepted it. The way in which I would suggest that it, the only way it can be done is that it is gifted to the school district as a sum of money. And then the school district on its own then takes the money and uses it as a source of revenue for constructing a, a playground. That way, the entire project is ours.
Right.
And we've accepted as a revenue source monies that we came to us from the Friends of group.
And we accept the liability because we.
And then the entire liability rests upon the school district.
Instead of it being on your. We can't go to PTA, that's why.
Right, right, right. Thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jeff Greenfield, City's Taxpayer, can you record it? Two meetings ago, I asked about the pilot dollars, if we could have a document prepared and maybe even shared online. Have we done that yet?
No, you have not put that together yet, no.
I think that's educational for the community to know where that revenue to this school district is coming from and what projects beyond just Avalon, everyone knows about Avalon, but there's more than just Avalon in this community that are pilots. So I would look forward to you preparing and sharing that document. With respect to this bond-issue column here, when does this bond-issue come?
I think what we did was just separate items that were larger ticket items that would not be able to be covered in the capital improvement line, so it would be more suggested to do a bond for. So I think Robert tried to help us kind of separate which ones were future versus next year.
Another way to look at it, Jeffrey, would be short-term, long-term. The things that you're looking at there in that third column are things that could be included in this year's budget under our capital.
Well, we're not having a bond issue in that.
No.
No, 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 no.
No, that's a good question.
But long-term, these are all projects that really need to be addressed. I mean, these are, these are issues that need to be addressed in the school district.
I understand that.
Yeah.
And in conjunction with that, I also asked if we could have a document shared with the community with respect to our debt service and the expiration of our debt service. Years ago, they used to do it when they said that the, in the old days before the state prescribed exactly how it's going to be done, we actually got more information because they showed the expiration of the short-term and long-term debt of the school district. And we haven't really seen that in years. I think we saw it in conjunction with some bond issue.
We've seen it more recently. We've definitely seen it. I've seen it since I'm on the board, but we could share it again.
Updated.
I think it's important for the community to know that also if you're anticipating another bond issue, that that would be helpful to you if there is old debt that is running on. And I read in the papers, it was cheap these days, so maybe the way to go. The other item is the turf field that you were talking about over there. The den we may have left, but the villages are in the final stages of turfing, the east bank of Alrill, they're getting it ran for that. So if you're so close, partner, they can extend the run over a little bit towards you.
I'll take.
But maybe in conjunction with the village, that we should talk about that. The thing with the turf fields is there's a county bid and all the villages accept the county bid and they don't have to bid separately. It's a lot cheaper. And by the way, the county bid is the same people that did the fields out here. So, and they're, they're foremost in it and they have the accepted low bid on it. So if we're going to do anything to turf, that may be, I don't know, this little field has to wait for a, a bond issue or what your plans are, but maybe it's worth having discussion. The, you read my line with respect to, it looks so terrible, the guard booth, that cockeyed and everything like that. It does not be fitting this community. And I was glad to hear that you have some plans to upgrade the entrance and exit to the school. We, we chime out on a lot of things. We built a beautiful issue back here that nobody sees. The first thing that everyone sees is, is the guard booth that's on wheels like this, you know, and it's just stuck out there. It's not very attractive. It may be efficient, but I think you should do a little better here. Can I beg your indulgence for one non-budget item that's on here later on, on the BOSI's election? And a friend, Mark, running already. Is this one of these elections that just the school board votes for or does the public vote?
So, so school board, but this is just for them to be able to get on the ticket. So a school board must nominate a candidate to be able to run. So that's the stage that this is at now and then the vote is April 21st and the school board votes on that.
Just the school, not the public?
Right.
I'm probably one of the few people that ever voted in a BOSI's election. I searched far and wide to go to West Hensett to vote once to find out, they weren't very helpful, even telling me where to vote, but I was determined to vote, so I went to vote.
I remember that vote. It was for a building. It was for the purchase of a building.
Right.
Yeah, and that's generally what they do. When they, when the public gets involved, it has to do with BOSI's purchasing a building. That's, that's where the public, every other vote that they take generally is, the, they are, each district gets one vote.
Okay, so why are we nominating two people if there's only one opening, Steve Witt for them?
Because it's, it's like signing somebody's petition. You can give them, you're basically giving them permission to run. They, they request that from the school boards. You can choose to do it however you want. We haven't had a lot of people reach out to us, multiple people every year, so we have both reached out.
So who's the second candidate?
He's Douglas Pescarella from Old Bed Page District. Plainview, yep. Plainview Bed Page.
So again, why would we endorse somebody?
It's not, it's not an endorsement.
But they're running, he's running against our.
You're giving this person permission to run.
But again, he's running against our candidate.
Not necessarily, because there's three positions open. Yes, there's two incumbents, but these two people could take two of the three seats. We have to look at it like that. So even though there's two, there's three seats open.
Three seats open.
There's not one seat.
I read that, but it seems to you when you're running it, when there's no one running.
Well.
I learned that, I learned that at Southside High School with Mr. Garfinkel when he was by danger. I mean.
There's three open seats, so.
Again, I keep asking.
Professional courtesy.
Yeah, it is.
It's courtesy.
It is a courtesy.
It's courtesy.
They both reached out.
Yeah.
And there's no reason for us not to, you know, basically sign their petitions.
I also wanted a bullet vote for the school. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have other questions.
Only budget tonight. Only budget tonight. Sorry about that. Okay.
Can I just add one thing? Good news, my gymnastics coach texted me from the county dinner and we were, our team was awarded the Maria Di Cristofiorio Sportsmanship Award, so they won the NASA County Team Scholarship, I mean, Sportsmanship Award.
Very nice.
Now, give me my turfs.
The principals would like to duck out. You may do so. Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a wonderful night.
We'll see you next week.
Thank you for coming. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from February 25th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?